Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Ken for carrying the water for me on Saturday. I was late getting to town meeting, so he did all the reports.
And we got ninety percent of what we were looking for, anyway.
I'll ask if anyone's recording other than WCTV. None. Preliminary business, spring have bond release. Do we have a report on that, Ken?
I haven't gotten anything from municipal maintenance on this one. I don't know if I had done a site visit previously, but there was NASBilt that was filed. And we need to get the work in the road, which was bonded to be approved by municipal maintenance.
Okay, so that's not ready to go forward?
Not until we have a report from municipal maintenance.
All right. Next item is Lowe's modification of the special permit. Where are we with that?
Hi, can you, can everybody hear me?
Oh, there's Kyle. Who's that?
Okay. It's Casey representing Lowe's.
Yep. You're on.
All right, sounds good. May I share my screen?
Oh, go ahead.
Let me know if you guys see it.
Yes.
All right, just to recap, again, this is the proposed Lowe's two rental center expansion, three thousand nine, three thousand one hundred ninety-two square feet with a cage area that's a fifteen hundred square foot outdoor storage. At our last hearing, the board brought up concerns regarding the seasonal storage exhibit that we presented last time. We have modified that exhibit significantly by eradicating some of the parking spaces here in this location and providing all this as eradicated spaces, as well as providing some eradicated spaces here to, to replace those with designated loading areas. That's my son in the background. To put designated storage and sales areas. By doing this, we were able to consolidate, especially in this area right here in the north. We were able to consolidate and remove the drive aisle. And so this will just be one striped area for loading. Now, the biggest concern the commission had was parking. Our last exhibit showed a total of three hundred eighty-seven. We were providing four hundred and sixty-three parking spaces in this. We, with an increase of, with an increase of more than seventy-six parking spaces. This actually satisfies the town requirements for the building. And it also, it satisfies Lowe's operations as a whole. It does decrease the storage area from the last exhibit and kind of from what they do out there now. But they're, they're willing to make that sacrifice. And we just, we need to know if the, the board is okay with, you know, having specific designated areas just for the storage and providing all this in the middle with the four hundred and sixty-seven parking spaces.
AC, you've obviously did some research on what the requirements were in terms of parking spots. And can you tell me what that requirement is based on your research?
We are, we are providing four hundred and sixty-three per the four hundred and sixty-three that the town requires. The existing spaces around, was around five seventy-three. We, we're assuming that this, obviously, this was parked as a whole, but this is the reason why we decreased so many because we wanted to get back to the town requirements for the building. And the only way I get satisfied what Lowe's wanted and kind of what the town's requirements were was to re, kind of remove these spaces and utilize a drive aisle here for a consolidated storage area space.
So I understand that, and that's good, but the only, my only comment is, and it's my bad that I don't know this myself. Obviously, you do, you say four sixty-three meets the requirement, and I'm, I'm wondering if you could tell me what that requirement is per the permit? I'm still trying to get that permit. I, I'll admit it, I haven't tried that hard.
It, it meets the requirement per your current zoning regulations.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I can go calculate that.
So we, we tried, we tried to look for and tried to figure out holistically the entire site and it, it just, it wasn't, it wasn't, wasn't going to give you guys a conclusion that we could defend because we just weren't there with the original permit. And we weren't there, you know, when the entire site was, was permitted and they had an overall parking space. But I mean, over time, the uses in that shopping center have changed from the original permit. And, and you know, Target has some outdoor display, which probably wasn't accounted for in the original permit. So it was really hard to decipher, so we had to go with what you guys are currently requiring for parking.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
And when you say eradicate the parking, it'll still be used when outdoor storage is not necessary, correct?
No, since, since there is seasonal display all year round, these will be permanently striped areas designated for that use. So it also helps the town manage the, the property as well because they'll be able to physically see where the, these products are supposed to go. And, and, and it won't, you know, it's not going to encroach into any existing spaces that are being utilized and per the town required amount.
AC, to clarify then, as part of the refurbishment, all those yellow areas will be restriped?
Correct. That is correct.
Thank you.
And in the rear of the building, we're, we're not striping only in the areas of the, where the hide, hide, hideings are. But the rear of the building will, is for loading. So these are, these striding areas are for sales display where the loading will continue in the back of, you know, pallet storage and, and what's out there now.
Casey, last question, all the terms and conditions that you worked on with the fire department are still met with this new plan?
So we, we coordinated with Lowe's unfortunately last Thursday, so we haven't got to send this plan over, but that is, we are planning to. I wanted to get the commission's feelings regarding, you know, eradicating these spaces and having a, you know, permanent fixture before I went in, you know, we have to get the thing, the, the affidavit signed and you have to go back and forth with Lowe's and back and forth with the fire department. So I wanted to make sure that they, the board was okay with this plan before we continued and got that affidavit signed, got, and, and, and got approval from the fire department on a layout. I mean, we're satisfying everything the fire department asked for originally, so I'm sure they're not going to have a problem, but yes, we, we do plan, if, if it comes favorable tonight, we do plan to submit that and get his feedback.
I guess the only thing that I could see that might be an issue is your outdoor display to the west there, the yellow. Doesn't seem to be a lot of room between that and your rental section, but the fire department can make the call on that.
Yeah, if I, if I could interject, it looks like you're saving a half a dozen parking spots between the end of the yellow and the corner of the parking lot. Why not just shift that down right into the corner?
Well, because we're trying to satisfy, we're trying to satisfy town's requirements per today's regulations in this box that's designated for the Lowe's. So if we're going to take those spaces, we'd be underneath the four sixty-three, which you guys acquire.
I think, Casey, I think his point was is that instead of having six empty far away from the building, have six empty right next to the building. So shift that whole yellow thing to this, to the north.
Yeah, we, we can definitely do that. I, there's this main drive aisle here, so I was just trying to, you know, people pulling out of, out of this and, you know, this is kind of a busy operation. I know they have it here now, so it's probably not a big deal, but yeah, I have no problem with, you know, making up those eight spaces here and shifting it down. And Lowe's, Lowe's would need it.
So Chairman, Chairman Barrett, is, is it appropriate for us to approve a plan contingent upon fire approval, or should we ask that, should we give our, our tentative okay to something like this and, and ask to see the fire department's approval before we officially sign off? Do you have a preference there?
Would probably save some steps if they, if we gave a tentative approval and then let, see if the fire department has any pushback on it. In case, in case we have to reshuffle the whole deck. I, I don't foresee that happening. I, I just.
So I, I'd make a motion then that we tentatively approve this plan contingent upon the Wareham Fire Department's approval with the one added caveat that the yellow storage area to the northeast of the parking lot be split as far as possible to the north as it could be.
Am I looking at the, I think I was looking at the compass upside down. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so north is, north is this way down here. So yeah, shifted further north. Yeah.
So that, that storage area on the, on the northeast doesn't get any bigger, it just slides to the north six or seven spots?
Let me see.
Yeah, you're not, you're not losing any spots, you're just shifting them.
All right, and Richard, that was you that made the motion?
It was Chairman Barrett.
I must. Was that you, Mike?
Yep.
Yep. Motion made by Richard, seconded by Mike King. Any discussion? All in favor? Mike King.
Hi.
Sam.
Mr. Chairman.
Sam's muted.
Hi.
Mike Baptiste.
Hi. I think Charlie was trying to talk to you for a minute just.
What's that?
I think Charlie Roy was trying to talk to Congress with you.
I don't know why it didn't come up. Charlie, are you on board here?
I, I was just, I just had a question as to whether or not anybody had researched that variance from the Board of Appeals to see if there was any conflict with what's shown to the terms of the, of the ZBA variance that was granted.
I, I actually did. I can answer that, Chairman. So I did, I looked at, at the page in books that you, you said, and it definitely says no outdoor displays will be allowed on the side facing Route one ninety-five from that, from that structure. And the structure in this variance is considered retail de-building, Lowe's building. So as you can see, this is the side of structure facing I ninety-five and actually because of our reconfiguration and our fire lane, they're, they're automatically not allowed to put any more structures on the side of the building. Which is why we kind of had this over, like adjacent to this, but it will help now further if we're further back. So this configuration actually satisfies that, even though that signage was never in place, put in place. It was supposed to be somewhere right here and it was never constructed and this area was never cleared out per what they were originally showing on the plan. So I think it was originally to block, you know, the view of anything from here, but as you guys know, if you drive I ninety-five, one ninety-five, it's, this is pretty forested here. So I think the, the reason for the variance was if there was ever a sign put here and they, and they actually did the earthwork they were supposed to, it would clear out a lot of the trees and you'd be able to see it along the structure. But this plan actually, and we, and we took that into consideration because we actually had, before, we had some display area here and now it's considered the side of structure, so we removed that and continued the striping for the fire lane into this area. So they weren't allowed to put it there.
That special, that variant special permit also addressed the number of parking spaces, as I recall it. Just wondering how that compared, and I believe since Lowe's is on a separate lot, that the variance was for Lowe's and not based on the total parking of the entire Wareham area, that entire developed area for Wareham Crossing. So the number of spaces that you have compared to what they restricted into in that special permit variance that they granted.
Yeah, I, I looked at that. I, I did not see a total number in that, in that variant. So I'm, I'm not sure what that number would have been, but it's, it's not in that, in that document that you, you, the book and page that you mentioned. And throughout the whole variance letter, because obviously it was, I think it was six pages, so it was book and then page you mentioned and then up to the sixth point. So I read all six pages.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read all six pages. I didn't, I didn't see a total designated for this Lowe's spot.
I would just, I would have thought that that condition would have been to satisfy the fire lane, which we've kind of reestablished, but do we need to go through a procedure to square this with the Board of Appeals? Where they were the issuing board?
That would clarify the, the protect them on the permit by modifying the original variance that was issued by the Board of Appeals. So we.
Protect them in the, in the long run. Yeah, I think that should be followed up on and I don't remember why the Board of Appeals was involved in this. Oh, it was because it was a, it wasn't as a right use. Is that correct, Charlie?
Oh, it would have, no, it would have been as a, a right use, but I think there was a limitation on the number of parking spaces that they had on the site. If you want, I can leave the meeting and go back and, and I can't copy the special permit because I've got the same problem that Richard does. Unless I pay him thirty bucks a month, I can't print it. But I think it's worth looking at just to be sure that there's no concerns here that would be in conflict with whatever the variance was.
But it'd be feasible for us to modify that original motion to add not only the approval of the Wareham Fire Department, but also the review of the ZBA special permit regarding parking spots? To move it forward, keep moving it forward?
I would think that would be prudent.
So how about I do this? How about I withdraw the original motion and make this motion that the planning board approve this application for Lowe's for the rentals for the tool rental addition contingent upon three items. One, that the northeast storage area in the parking lot be split as far to the north as possible with the same number of spots, the approval of the Wareham Fire Department and a review by the ZBA of their special permit regarding number of parking spots.
Well said. Seconded.
Same, same people motioning and seconding. We'll try this again. All in favor? Mike King.
Hi.
Mike Baptiste.
Hi.
Richard.
Hi.
Sam.
Hi.
Kyle.
Hi.
And I for the chair. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Item number three is David Fletcher. Freeze plan zero twenty-five map. Eleven F, no, one fifteen, I think. Lot one thousand. If you remember, with this failed to get approved a couple of weeks ago because we were unclear on on the legal statute quoted. I think since then, we've got a ruling on it that is appropriate for us to approve this perimeter plan.
Actually, as I remember it, we did not approve the perimeter plan because it did not meet the frontage requirements.
Right.
And the lawyer's letter back to us, which I read, is correct. We can, we can approve perimeter plans, but they still have to meet the frontage requirements. So I did some follow-up research and here's sort of what I, what I came up with is the properties located in an R one thirty zone. The applicant didn't specify use, in fact, refused to specify use. So if we presume non-residential, the frontage requirements for non-residential in an R one thirty are still two hundred feet. There's also a requirement that frontage be on a road recognized by the town clerk and be recognized as a legitimate way. That's not the exact words. During our post discussion, I, I went back to the A and R handbook and on page forty-two and forty-three of the A and R endorsement, determining an A and R endorsement, the planning board must or should consider frontage and granting an A and R. And the, some of the legal discussions, none of the legal discussions, and I'm not a lawyer, abrogated the requirement for frontage. So I think the, the reason we gave was that it didn't meet frontage requirements, and I still don't think it meets frontage requirements.
I agree.
So Carl, I did some very similar work to what you did in, in preparation for this. I went back to the, the Wareham subdivision bylaws and went to section two under criteria for an A and R. And it's very clear about frontage there. I also went to the list of cases that were cited in this legal letter from the applicant's attorney's group, attorneys and and, and went through them and, and, and again, I'm, like you, Carl, I'm not a lawyer, but in none of the, in none of the cases cited here was the A and R being denied because of frontage requirements. I think that the most important thing is, is that per Wareham A and R subdivision law, section two, part A, under criteria, if we were to grant this, we would be setting a terrible precedent in regard to frontage. We would basically be bypassing the, the frontage requirements, as Carl said, of two hundred feet, granting it and putting ourselves in a very bad position going forward.
I've got a question on that.
Go ahead, Mike.
And Josh, you go along while we're asking questions. What's the, what's the criteria on, it said limited access nineteen sixty-six for that twenty-foot access to that property? What's the limitations on it? Is there any, there's got to be documentation spelled in that. Oh. So in other words, I can't say I'm going to put a full-blown road in there, say to build a Burger King back there or something like that. You know, that's abstractly thinking, but.
Who are you asking that question to, Mike?
Basically, I'm asking it to judge. I'm putting everything on the same plate.
You know, this is definitely the circumstance where the access was cut off by the state when they continued twenty-five. And they provided access through this twenty-foot.
It says limited access for twenty-foot. We had a situation, well, I was involved in a situation similar to that. We had property off Charlotte Thrunis Road that the state cut off our access. We used an access through a right-of-way on the power lines because our access was gone. And we were told by the town at the town, tough shit, you're, you know, you're, you're, you're on your own, basically. What's the limited access?
Agricultural term, isn't it?
Pardon?
That's an agricultural term, isn't it?
Doesn't make any difference. The thing is, when it says limited access, what's, what's it limited to? Is it limited to I can go and improve it to a, a major road, or is it just access to get into that property? You know, it's not spelled those. It's not clear.
Mr. Chairman.
The problem is the lot already exists. Yes, Ken?
Yeah, the, the basis for the approval not required is to determine whether or not the, the plan shows a subdivision of land. That, that's where these perimeter plans come in and are somewhat, are somewhat different because this plan does not show a subdivision of land. All it does is, is show the perimeter of an existing parcel. So the, the determination by the board is whether or not you can endorse it as a plan that does not show a, a subdivision of land.
Well, the other question was, can, do we even have to endorse it? Can't they simply file it at the, at the registry of deeds? Or does that not give them their three-year extension?
It doesn't give them the three-year, if they do eighty-one X, I think, they don't get the protection. That, and, and the, and the whole discussion in the A and R handbook talks about doing A and Rs for this very reason. But it still seems to me that it still has to have frontage.
This is Betsy Mason representing Long Road Energy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ah, good. I've been trying for the past ten minutes on the phone number that you provided in your planning board agenda for this evening to make contact and was unable to do so. If I may, to the chair, may I, may speak with regard to the question of frontage?
Yes, please.
Thank you. First off, noting that, and let me, let me just go aside first to, to the board member's question that we didn't specify use last time. In fact, we did specify use. This is, right now, there is no use proposed. We're just looking to get endorsement of the perimeter plan. We don't need to say that there's going to be, we don't need to identify a particular use. That's not required.
No, I, I didn't, I didn't say that you did. I, I only used an assumption of non-commercial for calculating the frontage requirement in our one thirty zone.
Okay, understood. And that goes to, that goes to the frontage question directly. And in fact, I, I it appears that the board did not receive my second letter from today, sent to Mr. Buckland regarding the frontage question, and that is that the Massachusetts Appeals Court has clearly held in a nineteen ninety-five decision that a plan showing a parcel that lacks adequate frontage for zoning purposes is nonetheless entitled to A and R endorsement. And in fact, in that case, the landowner put forth a plan for A and R endorsement that showed three parcels, two of which were marked not available lot, one of which did not have frontage. The planning board denied the request for A and R endorsement. The landowner appealed to Superior Court. The Superior Court upheld the, or, I'm sorry, overturned the planning board decision and directed the planning board to grant the endorsement, A and R endorsement for the reason that there was no division of land into lots. And in discussing, in discussing the case further and explaining its reasoning in upholding that Superior Court decision, the appeals court very clearly said, pointing to section eighty-one P, and I'm quoting here, "A planning board's judgment is confined to determining whether a plan shows a subdivision." The court goes on to say, and this is the appeals court, not the Superior Court, "If a board is presented with a plan showing a division of land in two or more lots, each of which has sufficient frontage on a way, it can properly concern itself with whether the frontage depicted is actual or illusory. Similarly, if a plan shows a subdivision or division of land, the board can consider the adequacy of the frontage of any lot shown in the plan, independent of any variance that may have been or may need to be granted by the zoning board of appeals. However, if the plan does not show a subdivision, the board must endorse the plan as not requiring subdivision approval." And just to, to finish up here, the court, the appeals court goes on to explain the appeals court goes on to explain that the planning board in that case did not need to be concerned with whether the parcel in question had actual frontage or adequate, adequate frontage or was otherwise a buildable lot in any way, because A and R endorsement does not mean that parcel is buildable. The A and R endorsement is under the subdivision control law, not under the zoning law. And to quote the court, "Any lot depicted on an endorsed plan remains subject to all pertinent regulatory provisions other than the subdivision control law." In other words, it doesn't matter. The question of frontage doesn't matter if you've got a plan that is a perimeter plan that is solely showing the boundaries and the ownership of the property. Take that line of cases and then you take this case, which clearly says, a planning board, where, where a division of land is not shown, as we have here, where there's no division of land shown, you don't need to look to frontage because you don't need to make that determination of whether there's more than one lot. And therefore, you don't need to make the determination as to whether that one lot is on a public, private way or any of the, you know, the, the various descriptions or, or, or categories of way that qualify where you were, where you have lots that are going to be buildable lots. But the bottom line is, you don't have to have a buildable lot. And in this case, this 1995 Mass Appeals Court case, in fact, and it's unusual, but the, the court very clearly says this is acceptable and the board has to endorse this plan. The plan in that case had three, showed three lots, each of which was unbuildable. So you can have a plan that has no buildable lot on it, that nonetheless must be endorsed as an A and R plan because it does not show a subdivision. Plain language of 81P and the appeals court, you know, stated it clearly. I did double check myself, doing research like we all apparently were. And this case has not been overturned or questioned in any way by any subsequent Mass Appeals Court decision or by any Supreme Judicial Court opinion, either in that specific case or otherwise. So this is a still current viable mandatory directive to planning boards across the Commonwealth that where you've got a plan that is, does not show division of land and that may lack frontage, you still, because it does not show a subdivision and it is not any division of land, it must be endorsed as an A and R plan. And I would point out that the board's Form A provides for this option. If you go to page four of your own application form, to the planning board of the city of Wareham, the address sign wishes to record the accompanying plan and request a determination and endorsement by said board that approval by it under the subdivision law is not required. And then there's a list of reasons. The very first reason is pretty straightforward. The accompanying plan is not a subdivision because the plan does not show a division of land. So by the very terms, if you look at the four corners of your own application, it doesn't show division of land, therefore endorsement as an A and R plan is, is required. And I mean, I, I don't think that, that we can make it any more plain than that. And to, to, to do anything other than endorse this plan as an A and R plan will be to fly in the face of established case law and, and, you know, we would certainly a court would look favorably on that is, I guess, the best way to put it.
Can I respond? Can I respond, Betsy? This is.
Certainly, of course, of course.
All, all the cases that, that you've made and mentioned, and I, I have not seen a second letter of today, I, I'll be honest. And I do want to, and I do want to research the case that you're quoting from. But I think that, first of all, if, in my mind, if there was frontage, I would, I, you're, you're absolutely right. This would be approvable as an A and R. There's no doubt for all the reasons that you've stated other than frontage. For me, the frontage issue is, is the one and only one that makes me pause. So there's no subdivision of land. I don't care that they're not buildable lots, all, all the things that you're talking about. I totally agree with that. So for me, I need to focus on the frontage issue. I need to see, I need to see your second letter. I need to read that case and, and understand if that case applies to this situation or not before I can move forward.
I, I understand and I, and I would, I would say, you know, I, I respect that. And I mean, I think, as I, as I said, that case is clear in its holding, but you know, the fact pattern is interesting. I mean, you've got an A and R plan with no buildable lots. So essentially the court's saying, and it, I'll let, you know, obviously I'll let you read the case for yourself, but perhaps ask that you confirm with town council as well. You, the courts, the court has held that, that you don't need to look to frontage to, to.
Yeah, I, I hear, I hear, I hear your, I hear your point.
So it's a sort of unique case. And, and then this, this lot itself is kind of a unique lot, just given the fact that, you know, clearly, you know, it's, it's not directly on Charge Pond Road.
So I, I did spend a lot of time trying to find out what the definition of a perimeter plan is, how that applies to the word lot as used in our own subdivision laws. And I, I found nothing. And for all practical purposes, a perimeter plan, a lot plan, a plot plan, anything you want to call it, they're all the same thing is how I'm looking at it. Don't know that, if that's right or wrong, but that's how I'm currently looking at it.
Mr. Chairman, this is Carl Schultz. I, Ms. Mason presents a compelling set of arguments, which, as Mr. Swenson said, we should probably review. I also agree with Ms. Mason's recommendation that perhaps town council could give us opinion. Is it possible that we can continue this until we can all get a chance to review that letter? And get an opinion from Mr. Bowen?
What's that timeline, Ken? Do you have it in front of you?
The timeline, I see, it was going to be, we're going to be reaching the end, I would think. Yeah, we're pretty close to.
How often you encounter these situations, but I think it would be helpful if you provided the legal reference with the application so that could be researched before we get to this point.
My apologies for not doing so in advance.
You know, it, it happens a lot. I think it's something that we need to look for right up front.
The, the timeframe on this is it would be up on the 21 days before the next meeting of the, of the planning board.
Could we ask the applicant to grant us an extension so we can review this information?
I'm not sure you can extend an A and R, is that correct?
But wait a minute, wait a minute. May I, let me, may I ask, didn't we deny the A and R? Isn't this a new application?
A new application and a new plan. Both.
And didn't that start the clock over?
You're right.
So the June 19 deadline on the agenda is incorrect?
Should this actually get a new number? I think we're all understanding the applicant's position and they're, they're presenting a compelling case. We just want to make sure we have all our facts straight.
As, as I'm, as I mentioned before, Chairman Barrett, I'm, I'm mostly concerned about setting a very poor precedent if we don't understand this clearly and we, and we err. And I, I don't want to err and set that precedent. Now we're on, make sure that we understand what's going on.
Well, as far as I know, we don't set precedent, but it's always a discussion. What is the dash line that I see there? I can't quite make it out to the, to the bottom of the.
The, the line going the, the tie line?
Right. There's a couple dotted lines in the, at the bottom of the, on the jagged side of the lot.
Yes, and it says tie line in parentheses.
I can't read it. It's too small. So is that what it says, tie line?
Yes, and I, I actually asked the same question of our surveyor and consultant. And Jocelyn, are you on the line?
I am, yep. Hi, Jocelyn Gamble from BHB. Yeah, so that's just the tie line. The property actually follows the center line of the existing cart path. So that just assists in locating the, the property bounds. So it has a meat, has a bearing and then a distance, bearing and distance.
Okay.
You could find an X property bound from, you know, the one at the corner.
So the, the solid line is, is the actual property line?
Correct.
Thanks, Jocelyn.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question of Ms. Mason?
Sure.
I'm just looking at section 81L of chapter 40A, 40B, sorry. Where it defines what a subdivision is, and then it goes on to tell what a subdivision, when it is not a subdivision.
Right.
And it gives three criteria with respect to frontage. And it says it's not a subdivision if it has frontage. And then it gives three different categories of what frontage is and what the requirements that frontage might be. Can you explain how your plan supports either one of those three or four criteria?
It doesn't, and it doesn't have to because we are, hang on a second, I just lost my notes that were in front of me. Because we don't have any division of land here. We're not dividing the land at all. So we don't have to address whether or not there is access to and from an actual or illusory frontage along any way, public way, private way, any of the ways that, you know, we're all familiar with that typically where you've got a division of land. I think most often we're all used to seeing an A and R plan. You've got a parcel, you divide it in two, you've got a buildable lot and non buildable lot. And both of those need to be on, have, have frontage that would be adequate for zoning purposes on a way, as that's defined. Here, we are not dividing land. We are just, you know, presenting the parcel as it is. The property boundaries, noting that Mr. Fletcher is the owner. And the, the, both the SJC and the appeals court have said it is perfectly acceptable to, to go to a planning board to seek A and R endorsement for such a plan. And because the plan does not show a subdivision, the planning board is obligated to, to, you know, to grant that endorsement. So I, I, I understand it is, it is, when you read the definition of subdivision and then you read that exception, you know, it's not a subdivision, it's a subdivision unless you meet these criteria. That, that is true where you have a plan that is carving up a parcel into one or more buildable and non buildable lots. But where you're not dividing a parcel at all, that doesn't come into play. And I think you'll find that the 1995 appeals court decision gets into that a little bit. Sort of explains, explains the reasoning there.
A question on the protection that this provides.
Yes.
Does the, is the endorsement necessary, as George asked, to, to obtain the protection for the three years?
Yeah, the protection that we would be, would be getting would be, you know, from a three year zoning freeze, from changes to use requirements that were in place on the date of filing submission to the planning board.
Does it require the endorsement for that to, to occur?
Well, I would say if, if the board is uncomfortable endorsing the plan and just sets it aside and, and we essentially get, you know, the, a constructive approval and go through whatever, you know, checking in with the town clerk, whatever we need to do to, to perfect the plan and get the zoning freeze, then, you know, there, there is a process there. If a board determines that it's not going to take action on a plan to grant endorsement, then we would just go through those, those steps. You know, assuming that, assuming no action is taken on this plan within the required period, which I believe you said 21 days, you know, on, on day 22, we would would seek to perfect the plan.
George, if we're in doubt, right? They got a gun to our head. We can deny this plan because we don't agree with it and let them go from there.
No, I think, I think we've established this is a new plan and, and we do have more than, we can address it at the next meeting if you have.
But if we, if we, if we don't have enough time, and like I said, they don't want to give us an extension or whatever, with our, with our prejudice, we're just deny the plan. Let them come back with something else that'll work. Because, you know, we're beating our feet going back and forth and they're telling us what they're going to do. It doesn't work that way. If we're in doubt, that's what we get town council for.
Last week, and we have the next meeting of the planning board is the 28th or 14 more days. So we're, we're more than likely within the 21 day requirement.
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question and perhaps Ms. Mason can answer it or Mr. Buckland. We're, we're, I understand that the plan is attempting to establish some protections from zoning law changes. And that's, that's clear and that's fine. I, I'm trying to now, if this is a new plan, does that start today? And if so, what we, the town voted on Saturday to change the bylaw. When does that bylaw take effect? How do those two dates work together?
When the bylaw is voted, it becomes law. But there's a, a qualifying factor to that in that the bylaw isn't fully approved until the attorney general says it's, it was done correctly. So you can, you can use the bylaw at the time that the, from the time the town meeting votes it, but you're at risk with, if the attorney general rejects it.
So is the, is the applicant already at risk of missing the protection because we didn't pass it the first time, regardless of this is a new plan?
Carl, I think the key thing, and we learned this on another recent situation around the subdivision applications, it's when the town clerk or the planning office receives the application is when.
Yes, but I think if we just established this as a new application, the date has already been missed then.
No, the question is when, when did?
That was my question. That, that's, that's what I'm trying to understand.
The question is when did the application arrive in the town hall offices?
Yes, and that was June 8th. We submitted to the planning board and also provided the requisite letter notice to the town clerk last Tuesday, June 8th.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're good. We don't have to worry about the Saturday meeting then. We're, we can still work together constructively.
Yes. And we would like to.
Yes, absolutely, Ms. Mason. I would, I would ask Chairman Barrett that we take this under advisement until the next meeting, give the board members an opportunity to look at Ms. Mason's second letter and review that case, which maybe, may be more applicable to this situation. And finally, I agree with Carl wholeheartedly that we should get town council's opinion. And we should be able to wrap this up on the 28th.
So is that a motion to continue to the 28th?
It is.
Second, second.
Seconded by the board, is that what?
Seconded by the board.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Mike King.
Aye.
Mike Baptiste.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Al.
Aye.
And aye for the chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Betsy.
Appreciate, appreciate it.
Thank you, Nate.
You're teaching us a lot.
Have a very good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Next up, we have site plan special permit enforcement with Master Millworks.
I don't see them on the. I don't see them on the, on the list. On the, okay.
They're on the, they're on the agenda.
He means the list on the Zoom meeting. Charlie, could you shed some light on where we're at with that?
Yes. As you recall, at the last meeting, there was discussion about some testing. And I believe the board's vote was that you authorized me to go out and to identify certain points or locations within the pavement area for certain testing to be done. I think it was the Friday of that week when you authorized it, I went out and I marked fifteen locations. And in addition to that, I believe there were five other locations that Hanan Wiseman had marked on a plan, and I believe he submitted it to Ken, possibly with copies to the board members. This past Tuesday and Wednesday, I was out there with a representative from the testing laboratory in which fifteen, might have been fifteen or sixteen possibly cores were taken through the paved areas within the areas that I had marked out and some of which had been marked out by Mr. Wiseman. We determined the thickness of pavement and to the best of our ability in the six-inch cores that were done, we made a determination of the thickness of what was supposed to be the dense graded material and then the base material under it. I kept a log in my field book of each one of those. And the coring company was going to take the samples that they took. They took grab samples from not every hole, but samples of the various materials, which they were going to take back to their laboratory and actually run a seven analysis and gradation test on each one of those materials and then provide a report back to Master Millworks on what they contained.
Charlie, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Surely, go ahead.
The, the, the testing that, the, the samples that were sent to a lab for testing, this was to verify that the type of material was correct? Am I assuming that right?
Yes. Again, my concern has not necessarily been the type of material, although I will say that having observed all of the various boring locations in the tests, there is quite a variety of materials that were placed on the site. Going back to the original approved plan and even the one that was modified, it called for twelve inches of graded material, meaning a mass specification. I think it was section M one oh three C of the mass standard specification. And then there was a four inches of what is considered dense grade material, meaning another specification standard of the same specification of Mass Highway. In observing those, there were multiple cases where we didn't see dense graded, but in fact, they use reclaimed material for the four, top four inches. So when those test results come back, I think you're going to see a variety of materials. Clearly, in most of the spots that we observed, they did not reach the maximum or the minimum of twelve inches of base material underneath the dense grade. So the, the question that ultimately you're going to have to consider, and I would suggest that we await Mr. Wiseman and the report that he will get from his testing as to what you want to do with that. Some of the pavement area is going to be taken up because they have not installed some of the drainage facilities for a loading ramp that's at the end of the building. They also made a modification to the septic plan, which is not a part of your approved set. I believe, Ken, you may have a copy of it, though. I think Hanon Wiseman actually submitted one. And it does show a redefinition, you know, that's the existing one, Ken. The new plan, which they did, which was in the last month or so, shows a change in the septic plan, which is about in the middle of your sheet. I'll wait for the new one.
Go back to that.
Yeah, come back to that one if you will, Ken. Okay, if you're looking at the, just below the center of the picture, which is on your screen, you're going to see a cross-hatched area that's at the corner of the building. Yes, where that arrowhead is right now, where the, where the cursor is, that is a loading dock area. It doesn't show in this plan, but to the left of that, immediately to the left of it, is going to be a subsurface infiltration system for that loading dock. So they're going to have to rip out some of the pavement in that area in order to get that in. The second change is in just above that, you'll notice that there is a, right there, Ken. That is the subsurface infiltration system for the septic system for the new building. That has been changed and it goes in a completely different direction. It goes straight out and goes out quite a ways into the paved area. That also is going to have to be ripped up. So there's going to be some opportunity in those areas as well to investigate what the soils are underneath those areas. I've also, I've already told Mr. Wiseman that, you know, that's something we could do. But I wish I had control of the screen because I could show you where most of these were taken. But a number of them were taken along the access roadway, starting there and running all the way to about the beginning of the building. Keep going, Ken. Keep going. Right about there. It stopped right about there. That's where the pavement stopped. They took one at the very end. The pavement in the parking spaces just to the bottom of where Ken's cursor is, those have not been built yet. So they've got to do that paving over anyway. But again, we did some where your cursor is now, Ken, if you run straight up into the parking area, right in there, three, three tests were taken there. Other tests were taken in the new parking area just to the right of that. Scroll down a little bit, right in there. Yep, tests were taken in there. And also to the right of that little island that's there, we took some in that area. And in, as I say, most cases, we did not reach twelve inches of material below the supposed dense grade that sits just under the mix. So that's, that's all I can report to you right now. It would take, from last week, it was going to take the testing company a couple of weeks in order to get the report back to Mr. Wiseman. The testing company was not going to report on the construction methods or anything that they did not observe. They were not there at the time that the material was placed. So their report will simply reflect the type of material that's there and whether the material meets the specifications according to the approved plan. So once we get that information, then you'll have to decide whether there's any further action that you want to undertake.
Is this just binder or did they put finish?
It's, it's just binder right now, George, and, and there are multiple places where I would recommend that the binder be taken up anyway. The binder cracked in several places, which means to me that either the subbase material or the base material, the dense grade was soft. As a matter of fact, this sort of supports what the paving contractor told me the day that he paved and that it was the reason why he could not use a ten-ton roller like you normally would on a paved surface and was only using those little sidewalk rollers. As a matter of fact, he was using a trench compactor on it as well. But you can see there are multiple areas where the binder is cracked. And if it were me and I wanted to be assured that that was not going to fail in the future, I'd rip that up and put the binder back again. I did not mark those places out, but they're clearly obvious if anybody wanted to see them.
Mr. Chairman, I, I did go out on Wednesday when the company, the testing company was there and Charlie was there. And I thanked Charlie for walking me around and, and showing me the, the material coming out of the bore holes. I can report that I was glad to see the bore holes were actually what I was expecting them to dig so you could actually see down into it. Try, you know, so Charlie, I'm, I'm not going to change Charlie's report. He, he said everything he said to me. But you could clearly see the material was not the same in every hole that, that they were pulling out. And then Charlie, you didn't mention about the edges along the entryway where the, the submaterial didn't go all the way out to the edge.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the cross-section on the plan shows that the, the base material and the dense grade was to extend out a minimum of three inches beyond the back edge of the berm that's going to be placed there. It's Cape Cod berm on both sides of that roadway. I dug out the one section and I dug under the pavement and there was nothing there. So they really, it wasn't well marked out and I think because they were in such a hurry to place what they did, that they didn't bother to do that. Clearly, three inches is pretty small and to try and control that from a placement point of view is, is kind of tough. But nevertheless, they should have made an attempt and they didn't. So it is what it is at this point.
And then, and then the last comment is the area where the pine trees are is a thirty-foot-high mound of dirt. So they still haven't come up with a remediation plan. The, the trees are gone. So there's a thirty-foot mound of dirt there.
Yep. It, it doesn't seem to me like they're being very forthcoming with working with us to, to help solve this issue. Why, why wouldn't they be here tonight?
Well, I, I'm sorry, George. Reports and it's still a work in progress, so.
But is, is there, is there a, a stop work order still in place or is, is that not accurate?
Building permit that's been issued for the work beyond the foundation that's, that was approved by the building department. They have been forthcoming. They have been working with us. They've gotten the, the reports in. They've gotten the testers out there. I don't think that, that Accurate is saying that they're not cooperating. They are. It's just that what they've built isn't to the specification that they had originally laid out when GAF engineering designed the site.
Do they give you the indication that they're not getting what they have requested from their contractor or that they've made changes on the fly based on economic reasons, which that has been already mentioned once before?
They used the bill, bill of sale to show that the material, the amount of material that had been purchased was enough to meet the specification.
Well, just because they bought the material doesn't mean it was put where it belongs.
I think we, we could see that it hasn't been.
There, there's also that question. I mean, you were, you were given a number of so many cubic yards unless, unless someone were to actually do a computation and figure out the number of cubic yards that were needed based on this plan. I'm not saying that they're not honest about what the number was that they gave you, but it certainly should be verified. That's something that if you wanted it done, certainly could be done.
I think.
But I don't think that's, I don't think that's the issue. I think I agree with Kyle in that the, the point is right now, the evidence points to the fact that they did not get all of what they were supposed to there.
Well, I think you mentioned before, some of the areas may have been over dug and that fill went in the wrong place.
When we dug the test holes toward that bottom edge of the building in that general area, there were three test holes that were dug there. They were close on the twelve inches of material for the base in that section, but that's the section which they pointed out to me. The contractor pointed out and said, oh yeah, we put a lot more material in that, more than we needed to. So they're close there, but they're going to have to modify that anyway because they haven't extended the pavement area over to include those parking spaces. So it's all, it's all still disturbed ground. It hasn't been graded, it hasn't been excavated out to the proper depth yet. So regardless of what's there, they're going to have to bring in more to finish that. And also the paving has to extend out to the back of the building like it shows on the plan that you're looking at. That has not been done either. The base material hasn't been put in there at all. So they've got additional material to put in regardless of the number of cubic yards they supposedly put there already.
So Charlie, this is Richard. I just want to say thank you for your due diligence for identifying a potential issue and, and, and representing this board and, and getting the evidence to find out if there were issues or not. Obviously, there are and we'll see where that goes. Ken, I want to make sure I understand the enforcement process that we're going through right now. I didn't catch all you said about the permits, but before you go there, it's, it's my understanding that we can, the enforcement officer and where him is the building commissioner, Mr. Marquina, and this planning board can request of him to enforce permits that have been granted by this board. And I was looking to find out if, yes, that's exactly what's happened or are we using a different type of process?
No, that's exactly what's happening and what's being held is the building permit in the building department. So that has not been issued yet. So they can't proceed with the construction of the new building without that, that in place. The enforcement has been accepted by the building department and the building commissioner, David Marquina, is in charge of that, that the actions that the planning board recommends that be taken. We will be getting a modified landscape plan, for instance, to show a proposed response to the cutting down of all the wet pines and restoring the vegetation in, in the frontage area. I, I think the question about what to do about the, the base material is, is another one that the, the planning board has to think carefully on what you want the building enforcement, building commissioner to enforce on this. As to whether or not you want the, the whole area redone to, to meet the specification that was included in the, in the plan. And at, at what cost to the, to the development? And, and, and more importantly, of what value to the town? Where we have work that's done that, that goes into public right, the public right of way. We certainly want that to be to the, the highest town standards. I think you have to consider what the financial impact is to to modify the, the paved area on the site and.
Mr. Buck, Mr. Buckland, in, in addition to, I have a question, if I may. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. If you're not done, I'll wait. Is there any safety issue associated with the material not being properly applied? I'll be, I'll speak broadly that we should concern ourselves with if it's, if it's, they just got a shoddy job and they'll have to deal with it on their own. I understand that's one implication, but is there, is there a, a safety issue at all?
Well, if, if the material breaks up, the, and the, the drainage doesn't work properly, the, the problem is that there could be off-site impacts groundwater to adjoining properties as a result of the, of the problems on the, on the site.
So we should concern ourselves with that at, at least, right?
Yeah, you, you should concern yourselves because there's also the idea of emergency access as well, too. And whether or not the material, the surface will be appropriate to gain emergency vehicle access to the site.
So, so a heavy fire truck loaded with water or something, we wouldn't want it crumbling under that vehicle.
Yeah, I understand that the specification that was set aside for this property is, and I think, Charlie, you'll confirm this, there's a little bit more than the usual paving that we use for, say, a residential area.
Yes, you're, you're right, Ken. That's, that's one of the, one of the paradoxes of this, that's the correct word. Because I had a discussion. Because I had a discussion with Bill Madden, whose name is on the plan here, and why he drew the cross section the way he did in the first place. In other words, twelve inches of base put down in two layers and then dense grade on top of that for four inches. And then his original plan had five inches of mix. And his response to me was, well, I've done this in a number of industrial areas where there's a lot of heavy truck traffic. And to have a more durable and thick driving surface for vehicles such as that, he felt was warranted. I didn't feel at my place to argue with that. He has experience in it. It certainly goes well above what the minimum is that you have in your standards. Even by reducing the pavement width from five inches to four, which you did a couple of meetings ago, still, if you add it all up, it is more than what the minimum is in your own subdivision rules and regulations. So in terms of that, and from what I observed for the material that is put in place, especially since you've still got two inches of asphalt, which is going to go over what is there today. I don't see that that's going to be an unstable surface for, say, emergency services or anything such as that. The whole issue boils down, in my view, as to simply inadequate preparation and trying to do something which is done in a way which is noncompliant with the plan which your board approved. And making it difficult to actually enforce that without certain language or provisions being put into your special permit. I don't see that as a safety issue. I suppose it could be, but I don't personally see that based on the fact that we have materials there. There may be some question as to the adequacy of some of it. I think we should wait until we see the results of the testing to make a determination as to whether or not the materials were placed meet the specification irrespective of their individual thicknesses. If it doesn't meet the specification for the material that was supposed to be there, then I think there's a stronger case from saying, look, you didn't put down the material you're supposed to. It doesn't meet the thickness and now we find out it doesn't meet the standard specification it was supposed to. Rip it out and do it again. That may be an option. So I think it's premature for that.
Can I comment, Charlie?
Sure.
I agree with everything you said, and I also wanted to comment, especially about, let's see what the results come back. It's too early to try to figure out what the remediation is going to be. And two, I wanted to comment on Ken's, Mr. Buckman's comments, and that is that Master Millworks has gotten into a tough spot here. I don't know what caused this problem to happen, whether the owners were driving it or they had a shoddy contractor come in and do it. I don't know what happened and I don't care. This planning board is going to have to approve a remediation plan. And I just wanted to be on the record to say to Charlie that I will be looking strongly to you because I don't know this stuff and I will depend on you and support you with what you come up with. That being said, I want to make this as good as we can at the same time as painless as we can to Master Millworks. I'm sure that they've already paid quite the price for the situation they've gotten into. I don't want to make it any worse than it has to be, but I do want it done correctly. So that's all I have to say.
It's not over entirely, Richard, because the day, the first day that we were there doing the testing, the contractor showed up and asked me if I would go take a look at some drainage that he put in along the back face of the building. The plan called
How'd that go?
Well, it fell through five foot wide by three foot deep trench filled with stone wrapped in filter fabric. And when I walked up, I said, well, when did you call for that inspection? And there was a lot of stuttering and stammering and said, well, he says, I did take a picture. Well, all I saw was stone. And so I wrote an email back to Han and Wiseman and told him that the next time the contractor was on site, I wanted him to expose at least six areas along that entire stretch for me to observe the filter traffic because it was supposed to be put down in a particular way. We'll find out if it was. If it wasn't, I'm going to ask him to rip it out and do it again. We'll see where that goes. But again, it's a case of shoddy workmanship to some extent and less than satisfactory notice on some of this stuff, too. I would like, and I've spoken to Ken about this. I would like for sometime in the not-too-distant future to be able to sit with the board, and I think it would be most helpful once we're able to get back into a meeting where we can sit around the table and really talk about this face to face to maybe clarify what the purpose is for doing these site inspections, to clarify a a mechanism going forward such that there is absolutely no reason why either the owner of the special permit or the contractor in his behalf will not know what they're supposed to do. I put together some inspection procedures. Gosh, it goes back almost a year and a half now. And the reasons why I do certain things for inspections. And I would love to share that with the board at that time so that we could clarify that and have a better understanding and maybe put together some language which might even be boilerplate when all is said and done that goes in every special permit, every subdivision that makes it mandatory for the contractor to know what he's doing and what he's expected to do. So it may be a little late on this one because I don't recall that there was an awful lot of if you do this, then this happens sort of language in the special permit. But I think we perhaps could move in that direction in such a way that everybody would understand exactly what's expected of them. So I would appeal to the chairman to ask that to put that on an agenda at some convenient time so that we could address this. And I would certainly, as far as the landscaping area in the front is concerned, I don't think it's outside the expectations that that be put back essentially the way it was. You're not going to put in forty foot pine trees, to be sure. But you could put sufficient in there that you would get a dense grove the way that it used to be. Just a thought off the top of my head.
And I think our existing condition says the applicant will schedule inspections. Will, will meet with you and iron out the inspections.
Not only that, I believe it said it was supposed to start with a pre-construction meeting, which had never happened.
Right.
So we've got a little bit of work to do on this one. Again, the area, oh, that I asked Mr. Wiseman also, and I don't have the answer to this, the foundation for the building is in. If you look at the top portion of the building, right at the very top of the sheet, it shows two single door locations, one on the right side, one about the center, right where about the cursor is there. It shows one, two, three, four, five of them along the eastern side of that building. The two at the top have cutouts for doors which would be flushed with the proposed cement floor on the inside. But there aren't any cutouts on the right. So it appears that they eliminated all those single doors. I don't know if that's an issue or not. I haven't discussed it. I did ask Hannah Wiseman in my email, did he eliminate those doors? What's the story? The plan seems to show them. I haven't had a response from him, so I don't know what's going on there.
That'd be a building code issue.
In what regard, Ken?
Be a building code issue for egress.
Okay, but again, it's something that appears to have been a revision of the plan without there being any discussion with your board and what the special permit plan shows. So I put it out there as a question. I haven't heard from them. And the thing that brought it to my attention was that that stone strip that I spoke to you about earlier runs from the entire lower end of the building all the way to the top in one continuous section. So there's no place that's been allotted toward the five of those openings to put pads there for, you know, a landing or stairs or anything going down to grade. So I don't, I don't know what they're planning to do.
Yeah, if that was part of an architectural requirement, then it would, it would be part of their site plan, but. So what's it leave it with a blank wall with no windows in it?
Yeah, nothing, nothing to suggest that there will be any doors of access to that rear wall at all. And the same on the south end. If you look on the south end, I think there's a couple on the south. To be honest with you, I don't remember whether it had the notched out areas in that part of the footprint.
I mean, it still sounds like they're doing whatever they want.
That's, that's why they come to Wareham, do whatever you want in Wareham. I think, I think we got to get back to basics and set some ground rules that they do what they're supposed to have done in the first place, or make them pay. That's all there is to it. Get them in the park about where it hurts. You know, we set a precedent. Everybody watches this. Everybody comes before us. Everybody got a hardship and everybody does what they want to do and nothing happens. You know, it's becoming, I don't know, it's the mud on our face. You know, like I said, we, every other case is the same thing, Charlie. You know, we're going to, we're going to do something to tighten it up, tighten up the noose on these people.
I think, I think we beat this enough.
I would like to, I would like to be able to sit down with you and go through some things. I think I can offer some suggestions. I've got things written up in a page and a half document, which, once we're together, we'll be able to look at it. You can redline it, you can cross it out. Change it, whatever you can do and see where we go with it from there. But it would be helpful to me if we can tighten some of this anyway. Or whoever does the inspections. No, I'm not going to be here forever. So whoever does it, if I'm not doing it, it'll be to their benefit as well.
Very good.
We've got another twenty-five, thirty years, Charlie. You'll be around.
I wish. My name is not Methuselah, Mike.
There are no continued public hearings, so you have a, quite a list of public hearings. First one I have is a preliminary subdivision plan for Eddie Makepeace and David Fletcher at Zero Maple Springs Road. We have all the paperwork on that, Ken?
Yes, we do.
Would you would you like us to waive the reading of the ad or if you got that with you?
Nice if you could waive it.
All right, there's no objections, so we can. I don't have the I don't have the engineering firm that's covering this, so if you could. I don't have it written down, so if you'd like to introduce yourself or who's ever representing the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Greg Sampson. I'm the attorney representing the applicant. I'm with the firm Womblelon Dickinson. So I am here on behalf of the applicant for actually the first four of the public hearings you have on your agenda. So I will introduce myself each time if you'd like, but I'm happy to talk about the application. For its benefit, I was, I was the one who prepared the memo read with town council regarding the purpose of the filings of these preliminary subdivision plans. And so just for context, I was involved in that and again, happy to talk about the plans themselves and any procedural questions or any other questions you have. I can just introduce the one with zero Maple Springs Road. We drew a cul-de-sac for three new lots on the property. It's a very simple layout. This is the preliminary plan, so we submitted it in accordance with the Form B and the required filing. And we would ask for the board's, you know, input as it relates to the next steps, which is the filing of definitive subdivision plan.
I see two lot twos, is that correct?
It's the same lot. Lot two is the majority of the site. What we have is lot one and lot three are close down to Maple Springs Road layout and then lot two is the vast majority of the site.
Oh, okay. A little hard to pick up on the small screen, sorry.
No problem. The scale of these is unusually large.
Greg, I'm struggling on exactly what I'm looking at here to give me just a little more context. I'm trying to bring it up on my own screen as well.
Yep, so we have essentially, you can see, Road A is a cul-de-sac that extends off road. And we took, we have three lots that we're creating, lot one and lot three. And then lot two, lot one and lot three are both smaller lots that front on both Maple Springs Road and Road A, the new subdivision layout. Lot two solely fronts on Road A, the new subdivision roadway. Does that help? So Road A is, lot two is the vast majority of the site.
Yes, that helped very much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So the question here, and bear with my naivete, not to you, Greg, but to Mr. Buckman and Chairman Barrett. We went through a bunch of filings of preliminary subdivision plans before. The real question is, is all the proper material there? Or have all the proper forms been filled out? All the proper fees been paid? And assuming that they have, then we move forward and wait for a definitive plan.
That's correct. You do, one of your actions is to determine completeness of the application and all the material and the filing fees have been submitted as required by the subdivision rules and regulations. You can also make recommendations as to the definitive subdivision plan and what should be shown on that plan to improve the subdivision.
Well, based on what I've seen so far on the preliminary subdivision plans at our last meeting, and I expect to see on this this future meeting, there's not a lot of detail to, for me to make any recommendations. I just assume wait till the definitive plan's available.
I agree.
So Ken, I would expect that if there were any discrepancies in the requirements that your office would be letting us know.
That's correct.
Thank you. I'm done.
So when you, I'm trying to, I'm still trying to get the locus right here. When you, so when you come over Route 25, this would be on the left-hand side of the road? Is that what I'm seeing? Which is mostly cranberry bog?
It is mostly cranberry bog. That's correct, sir.
Right opposite that, what is it, Agawam Lake shores that's in there, George, on the right?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was thinking in my head it was further up, but it looks like it's right at the Agawam.
Yeah, it's just north of Route 25.
Yeah.
The buttset, actually.
Yeah, okay. I see where.
Their cul-de-sac, George, is just south of their strip of houses they put up there on Plymouth Road.
Right. So we don't really. Yeah, it's a big lot, so.
Yeah, this appears to be, this appears Yeah, this appears to be, this appears to be almost all cranberry bogs. I'm looking at a satellite view.
Yeah. I'm looking often it's all cranberry bogs and reservoir.
In my head, I was thinking it was further up where where subdivision was previously proposed, but, all right. If there's.
I have no, I have no more comments, George.
All right, this is a public hearing. I will open it up for input if the board is all through with their questions. I'm not seeing any, so that doesn't mean anything. I may be missing something, but.
No, wait. I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I've still messed up with this process, but Annie Hayes and this subdivision is in a res, is residential. I'm confused about what the, the preliminary is telling us here.
Yeah, what are they building?
There's nothing suggested other than creating three lots.
And that's all required. This is in a residential area at res, I mean, I see residences. What, what is the designation of this area?
I don't have that in front of me. Is it R60 there, Ken, or is it?
R60, I believe, yes.
Does that mean that?
Located in R130.
Wait, can we only have one person talk at a time, please? Could you identify yourself?
I, I'm Annie Hayes speaking, but yeah, let me, let me just finish. So it is, I just heard 130 and it, but it's 60? Or what is it?
Can you confirm that, Ken?
Yeah. It's apparently 130. That's 130,000 square feet per lot.
So do these lots have to be consistent for that designation or in that designation?
They need the frontage and, and the area requirements.
That's all. Nothing else? No, nothing at all to indicate what they're, what they'll be?
They'll be in conformance with zoning, which is residential. That's all we have available to the, the use of the site, whatever is allowed under the zoning bylaws.
Okay, so they are, they will be residential lots, is that correct?
Yeah, they are, they are submitted as residential lots.
Can that change?
Only if there's a zone, a zone change by a town meeting.
Okay, so houses, is that correct? They're, they're just to be prospective houses or not?
You could put one house per lot and with the new new regulation that was just passed on Saturday, you could put a accessory dwelling unit on it as well.
All right. Yeah.
Well, I haven't studied that close enough, but, okay. Ken, the, the lots that exist along Maple Spring Road, were they part of a cluster development?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
You weren't here then. I should be able to remember that.
There was, there was a cluster that was done, but there wasn't, on frontage lots, but it wasn't done on this road recently.
No, it was a while ago.
I have one more, I have one more comment if I might. The, the next submission would be a definitive subdivision plan, is that correct?
Correct.
And the public, in order to be able to have a proper discussion of, of an individual concern, et cetera, would, would want to see those prior to the meeting at which they're discussed?
As well as the board members.
Right. So when would they be made public, please?
When they're submitted to the office of the town clerk and the planning board.
And is that ever a certain number of days before the meeting so that we could be prepared on those?
Because of our requirements for public notice of public hearing, it's usually three to four weeks beforehand.
Okay, and is, this is a generic question. Do the butters at that point get notice of, of that meeting?
Yes, they do.
Okay, registered, registered. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Did I see Nancy or did you? Did your question answer?
George, thank you very much. This is Nancy McHale. I was just wondering, since there's so much cranberry bog there, is there enough buildable upland that you could actually get to, to put a dwelling on it?
This, this doesn't make any statement as to buildability. It's just creating three lots.
Okay, um, I misunderstood then.
Doesn't create anything until it goes to a definitive, but it.
Okay, so again, there's no, no commitment to it being specifically residential. But this is just saying that they now have three lots and they can do whatever the zoning allows them to do here. Correct?
Whatever the zoning allowed them to do at the time it was submitted to the town clerk.
Right, right. Absolutely. Thank you for.
Let's make sure, I mean, let's not dance a beat around the bush here. We all know what's going on.
Tell us.
It was perfectly legal and proper and, and people are doing due diligence to do it according to our bylaws.
I do not disagree with you on that one. Thank you, Richard. Appreciate it.
I appreciate your comments, Nancy.
One more. Could I come, ask a question on that?
And who's speaking?
It's Annie again. Thank you. Did I miss something and we all know what's going on?
Yeah, these are freeze, these are freeze plans to protect zoning. That's what's going on.
And freeze plans for, is this going to be solar over cranberry bogs? I don't understand what the inference is.
We, we don't know what it's going to be at this point.
But is that a possibility?
Absolutely.
Okay, see, I, I feel, you know, like I'm out of the, the picture because when I say are they going to be, they're, they're designated residential, three residential lots. And I'm thinking, well, that's what they're going to be, but there's this other conversation, so. But there's not, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is Richard Swenson. I'll give you my impression.
Thank you.
We did, we recently changed zoning bylaws regarding solar farms and we changed zoning bylaws regarding several things at town meeting on Saturday. One of the things that property owners can do is submit subdivision plans, submit A and R requests, which we went through at the first part of this meeting, to put a stake in the ground that said these applications that were made during appeared in time when the law read as such. And therefore, this application only has to adhere to the laws as they were written at the time they were submitted. So that, so this subdivision plan was submitted prior to the town meeting on the 12th. So the, the town bylaws prior to the town meeting on the 12th are what are applicable to this subdivision application. If, if and when a definitive plan does come back to this board, there will be a lot more detail and we'll know exactly what's going on. All we're doing today is accepting the subdivision plan that calls for three residential lots, no more and no less. And locking in the bylaws prior to town meeting.
To lock it in, they're going to be required to submit a definitive plan by seven months of this time. And then they get eight years of protection.
I, I understand that. I'm asking really for the general public that may not understand that three residential lots doesn't mean three residences. And, and so according to the bylaws prior to the Saturday vote, there may not be enough upland for a residence, but that's, that's irrelevant in a way. If they, if the owner wants to put in panels over all those cranberry bogs, that's a possibility. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. They have to get a special permit for that process.
Okay, what else is possible there then? Because people don't understand this, you know, including myself. What else could be built there?
Agricultural uses.
Annie, that's a pretty open question.
Yeah, I don't think there's much you can build on a cranberry bog, so.
Okay, well, that's what I'm thinking, but I'm thinking I don't really, you know, what do I know? So that's why I'm asking you. Okay, I get the idea. Thank, thank you.
I have my hand, I have my hand up.
Yes, Ms. Morales, you were next.
Yes, thank you very much. You know, when you say, let's call a spade a spade, why don't we really do that? And that this body really has an obligation to the will of the people of this town and the will of the people of this town is to stop this. And we need to stop using the euphemism of solar farm. You're not farming anything. And we need to stop playing these games. And the reason for this planning committee is to plan and not to bend to the will of developers. And I do not agree that it's a done deal, that because this was slid in before a erroneously delayed public meeting, town meeting, this bylaw change was well-publicized long before the meeting. Therefore, this developer was unnoticed long before that this was coming down the pike. And I do not agree and will challenge to the nth degree, to the ends of the earth, that this is grandfathered. I do not agree it's grandfathered. Your town attorney has been wrong about this before and I think they're wrong now and I will challenge this. I do not agree that this grandfathering is de facto okay. Thank you.
Well, I, I will take exception to saying this is the will of developers. This is the will of your government. Your government is jamming this down your throat. Developers are taking advantage of that situation, yes. But there are people that we send to Washington and we send to Boston that think we're going to power this earth with solar panels and that's what you're going to get. And I think next was Mr. Jepson? I don't hear him.
Can you hear me?
There you are.
Okay, thank you. I must admit, I'm a little bit confused because I was reading in the Wareham Week on May 25th, at your meeting, you said the planning board was unable to block eight solar, solar projects requests for preliminary subdivision plans. And I'll just say, I'll, I'll address the three, the four actually, for A.D. Makepeace. Has the town come to an agreement with A.D. Makepeace? Considering that, because there was a, they were given a first refusal on the property. Was that identified as to what the purpose was?
Once again, this is a preliminary subdivision plan. There is no use demonstrated to us. And as far as the 61A goes, I think when they file a plan, they're supposed to come out of 61A.
So there is no agreement with the town?
We have no, that's above our pay grade.
I'm sorry, I'll address this to Mr. Buckland then. Is there an agreement with the town or the town administrator or the board of selectmen that this property will be utilized in a fashion other than residential?
No, there's not.
Thank you.
Community land and is that you, Ms. Hayes?
No.
Oh.
Yes, this is Meg.
We lost you.
Maybe you went muted right in the middle of your comment.
Yeah. Who's, there you are.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak. It's Meg Sheehan. Our coalition includes many members in Wareham who are concerned about this issue and I was just wondering if I could ask a question about the subdivision rules and regulations and what they actually say and how it relates to the, these projects. So the preliminary plans, when you look at subsection C on page eight, that the plans are supposed to, say, should show sufficient information about the subdivision to form a clear basis for discussion of its problems, if any, and for the preparation of the definitive plan. And then it goes on to list, you know, a number of items. So if, it's widely acknowledged here that the purpose of these plans is to try to freeze the zoning so that solar projects can be built, industrial, ground-mounted, energy generating stations with large storage batteries. How can we have a discussion about the problems, if any, for the preparation of the definitive plan? If the definitive, if the preliminary plans don't show the actual use that is the purpose of the freeze?
All, all the preliminary plan needs to demonstrate is area and frontage.
Well, then, why does the subdivision rule and regulation of the town of Wareham say it has to show sufficient information to form a clear basis for discussion of the problems? The problems with large industrial ground-mounted solar are many, as has been demonstrated in many of the hearings and so forth, whether it's with drainage, wetlands, fire hazards from the large storage batteries, toxic pollution.
So once again, we're not discussing a solar project.
Ms. Sheehan, this is Richard. Can I, can I make a comment? All, all your points are, all your points are valid if this was to be a solar farm, but if it was to be a hotel or if it was to be any other thing, using your logic, we would have to go through every possible implementation that could be done on this map at the time of the preliminary. So the preliminary is just to define the lot lines in terms of area and frontage, no more, no less, no usage. The definitive does that. And when that plan does come from, if it, if it come forth, if it does, within seven months, all the questions that you want to ask, probably all the same questions that I want to ask, will be asked. But this is not the time and place. And this is our laws as our leaders have put in place, as our voters have voted them in place.
If I could add to that too, George, just for a second. What Richard has said is correct. But in looking at the, the preliminary plan, the requirements for preliminary plan are general in nature. It says it should show topography in a general way, drainage in a general way, the width of the road, the width of the pavement, you know, approximate approximate drawings and so forth, sufficient that the planning board, if it had any questions about that, they could ask questions and you could iron out those issues to be taken up at the definitive stage. That's all it really requires. It has nothing to do with the proposed use of the lots. Because the lots are, are separate entity in terms of zoning. What you're really looking at and doing is looking at the road as access to these lots. And in this particular case, it's only going to be one lot and it's lot two. Lot one and three have frontage on Maple Springs Road, so they don't even have to have frontage on the other road. But the issue that you really are looking at with the subdivision plan is the construction of the way, whether or not it's satisfactory for utilities and so forth, for safe travel, that sort of thing. And the definitive plan will have all of that information in addition to the planned information that you already have. So it has nothing to do with any proposed uses, as has already been suggested. The uses that are allowed in the zone are allowed for any subdivision plan if it complies with lot area and lot frontage. So that's really all that the planning board is doing at this stage. And it's what the statutes allow an applicant to do in anticipation of a zoning change, which is what's taking place.
It, it seems to me though, to follow up on that, this is Ms. Morales. You can't know if that's going to be a sufficient frontage or sufficient width of road. If you don't know if you're talking about a passenger car or a multi-ton truck taking out sand. So there's no way to have a potent discussion on this proposal without knowing that. So there's no way to have a potent discussion on this proposal without knowing that.
Well, that'll come up as a part of the definitive plan. And all of that detailed information will be made part of the public hearing where that information will come out.
But that's in opposition to what you just told us. So what Attorney Sheehan is bringing up is very relevant, that we can't have any kind of an intelligent discussion on this with absolutely no indication of what the use would be.
I think this is what the preliminary subdivision is for, to raise those questions and to allow that to be discussed during the definitive subdivision. If there is an issue that you think it needs to be addressed because of the land and its opportunities, and what it might be come, then you can have that raised as something that should be addressed in the definitive plan submission.
I have one more comment. For a person in a group that worked... I'm sorry, Annie, Annie Hayes. For a person in a group that worked so hard and long and had so much popular support, to change the size of solar bill degradation, takeover, whatever word you want to use, depending on your position, it just seems that by putting in this almost nothing plan, I'm not belittling the plan requirements you have at the moment, but it was such a minimal submission that that could possibly lead to a huge development that so undermines the will of the people, had it not been for the change in the town meeting date, which was due because of 30% chance of rain, and that long, drawn-out, end-of-April, May conversation that the planning board had about what is grandfathering. I remember, the last I heard of that was when Mr. Buckland said, well, let's keep, should we have a meeting on May 3rd? And that was to put in a few plans that were already there, maybe two, he said. And then when Mr. Barrett asked about it, he said perhaps four. And now we have, how many, nine? And there, how large is this one?
We don't know what it is, Annie.
I know, but the lot, I mean, the area is huge, so.
Unfortunately, the nature of the beast, when any zoning change is even suggested, people run out and file these freeze plans. They're protecting their rights. Whether anything ever gets built on these remains to be seen. There's other hurdles they have to clear. Back in, I think it was 2006, all 1,100 acres of Makepeace Land was subdivided to protect lot size. And no change was ever made. So whenever you suggest a zoning change that will change a property, you're going to get bombarded with these freeze plans. We're past town meeting now. We should be past that stage.
I understand that. Is there some place where you could specify the hurdles for the layperson who would like to know your specifics?
Well, they, again, they have to file the definitive plan. And a lot of work goes into that, such as the road construction and the lot layout. This is only three lots. Then they also have to go through the permitting process for whatever use they propose. You know, if it's not an allowed use within the R-130 district, they'll have to seek relief from that.
This is Richard. Annie, could I make a comment?
Yay!
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
This is Richard, Richard Swenson. I just want to comment to you and others. I sense your frustration, and I know where you're coming from, and I know what you're trying to accomplish, and I support what you're trying to do in the end run. But I spoke to this at town meeting. These are our laws. And to ask the planning board to require of developers and applicants more than is what is required by the law, it's not a philosophy I can sign up. The philosophy that I agree to do is to go try to change those laws. And we did a great step forward with our solar bylaw change that we did on the 12th. Do you want to change our subdivision laws? You should make, because that's what you're asking for. You're asking for us to implement or require on these applicants a different set of rules and regulations outside of the subdivision laws that we currently have in place. My suggestion to you would be to do what I'm doing, and that is to study those laws and figure out if there's a way that we could make them better, we could make them fair to developers that we want. We can make them fair to planning boards and citizens. We can make them fair to developers that we maybe don't want. But right now, those are the rules that we have to operate under.
Well, you're absolutely... Sorry.
I hear so many suggestions that I should be doing something illegal, basically, in my mind. I hear it all the time. And it's very, very frustrating, because I think people are focusing on the wrong areas. They're focusing on us on a planning board or a land use board who are tasked to enforce the law when you don't like the law and you want us to do something different than the law. Am I being clear?
Oh, you're being very clear. I appreciate it. One of my descriptions is that I don't necessarily understand the law, and I have seen different explanations of it, and I have to look at it more. And I will come back to you on the idea of reviewing the town's bylaw and seeing if there's a consensus about changing it from all different areas. Thank you.
Well, we saw on Saturday that it can be done.
Yes, it can be.
I'm sorry, before you close the conversation, I just have to support what Annie's saying. This is Lisa Morales. This is this board's interpretation of this law. It is not a definitive interpretation of the law. It's not a court's decision about the law. This is one board's of volunteers who may or may not be qualified to define this law. And it will change with the next board and the board after that. So I think to put this forward as asking anybody to break the law is absolutely not an appropriate way to describe what we're doing here. What we are doing is asking you to look at all of the options out there since we aren't the ones trying to sidestep the law. That's already been done. And that we don't concur with your current interpretation of the law. So we are not agreeing with you that what you are saying here today is a definitive explanation or interpretation or implementation of any of this law. None of you are qualified to do that. So we ask you to please stop making these pronouncements that are then going into the paper as de facto, you know, from on high laws. They are not. This is one board's interpretation, which has, as we've seen, changed dramatically over the course of time on each and every matter. So please, this is your interpretation only. Thank you.
And I appreciate your work. I really do. I think you're all really good individuals and have a civic sense. We did see the conversation about what constituted grandfathering, and it was convoluted, and who knew? And Mr. Bowen said, well, I'm going to go ask Zach Farkas, who is the developer. And, you know, it just was, it was great to see it because it was real. But it also was somewhat disturbing in the light of thinking we were going to pass this bylaw before all of this grandfathering could take place, and then that was not possible, and we saw that confusion. So I hope you understand what we are seeing. And I think that we I think that we're moving forward and having a similar goal, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing on this application for Zero Maple Springs Road.
Seconded. The motion's been made and seconded. I saw one hand come up again. I just... And again, it just says community land and something.
Yes, this is Meg Sheehan again. And yes, Meg Sheehan, thank you for the opportunity. Again, no one is asking the board to do anything illegal. We're simply studying the town's subdivision rules and regulations and seeing provisions that appear to us to say that there needs to be a basis for a discussion. And I will just give one example, and I don't want to belabor this any further, but it does relate to all of the other plans as well. For example, the plans are required to show a proposed system of drainage. How could that possibly be shown when you don't know what the use is? So again, it's a question of interpretation, and thank you for your explanations and clear statement of your position. And we appreciate it.
Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded. I didn't say by who. Was it Richard? Did you make the motion?
Richard made the motion. I think Mike King seconded it.
Okay, just for Sonia's benefit. Any discussion? All in favor, Mike King?
Aye.
Sam Corbett?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
He's muted.
You're muted, Mike.
That's because I didn't want to say nothing bad. Aye.
Not you.
No.
Richard?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And aye for the chair. Did I get everybody?
I believe you did.
Is there another motion to be made?
Motion that we accept 13-21 preliminary subdivision plan, A.D. Makepeace Company, David Fletcher here of Beals &amp; Thomas, Inc., Zero Maple Springs Road, map 126 lot L1 and map 115 lots 1011, 1012, 1013, 1014, 1015, and LC 6.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mike King. Discussion? All in favor, Mike King?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And aye for the chair. Ken, could you help me out? That was the last thing I had written down on the agenda.
We have 27 Charge Pond Road, 150 Tohona Road, and 140 Tohona Road. I think Mr. Sampson represents those three as well.
Why are we seeing 140, 150 again? Is this a public hearing also?
Yes.
Let them tell us.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
If you could explain to this board and the public, if you don't mind, 27 Charge Pond, 150 Tohona Road, and 140 Tohona Road have been through the special permit application at the planning board. However, there are now subdivision plans in place. The public is, I'm sure, as I originally thought, was wondering with the permit already in place, that the subdivision laws at that time would be applicable. Yet, the subdivision plans are being put in now. And I think, I'm pretty sure I know why, but I think it would behoove you to explain.
I'd be happy to. So again, Greg Sampson, Wumble Von Dickinson, the applicant, A.D. Makepeace. Yes, you're correct. And I think the board had a discussion previously. There were solar projects approved on the next three sites. What happens with those approvals, though, is they only protects from subsequent zoning changes for a very limited period of time. It's 12-month freeze from the date of issuance of a permit, special permit, or building permit. The concern for the applicants and the landowners with these cases was that an awful lot of work went in by the applicants and the boards, numerous town boards, and reviewing the projects. And it was by no means a certainty that we would get to the point of construction with sufficient time within that 12-month period. So these preliminary subdivision plans, again, provide a freeze of the zoning in effect at the time of filing of the plans, which means we're guided by the zoning in effect when the permits were issued for these projects. So in each case, and I'm happy to explain, you know, each one in detail, but each subdivision shows almost a very similar layout to what we just reviewed. It's a short cul-de-sac off a public street. We have two lots to the side, and in one lot at the cul-de-sac end. So there's one lot that is entirely dependent upon the cul-de-sac for its frontage. And in this case, lot 2 and 3 actually depend on the cul-de-sac roadway for frontage. Lot 1 has frontage on the cul-de-sac roadway and Charge Pond Road. This case, we're looking at, I think it's about 150 acres total, roughly, land owned by A.D. Makepeace. And I think the board is familiar with the property from its prior deliberation on the project that was there.
How much frontage does Lot 2 have on the cul-de-sac?
168, I believe. 186 feet.
Is it? I don't have my own version of the map up. Can you show me that?
I think the table is...
Is the reason for this submission is the previous approval was based on approval, not required lots?
Thank you.
So I'm sorry, I missed the question. If someone could ask that again, please.
The reason for this submission is the previous approval was based on approval, not required lots?
Well, what this, not necessarily. I mean, this submission itself also provides the same plan freeze protection that is a longer freeze on the zoning than the permit itself provides for. So I think we submitted the memo that outlines some of the concerns with the short duration of the freeze from zoning associated with the permit. This filing will allow us, you know, if we submit a definitive plan within seven months of the filing, we could have a longer freeze that allows for the construction of the project as approved.
So all the work that we did on the original plan for this lot of land is going to be discarded. We start over in order to freeze it.
You know, on the contrary, the approval, allowing us to freeze it means that we can build according to the approval as issued.
I don't remember the original approval having three lots, though. I thought it was one tract of land.
We don't necessarily have to build, I'm sorry, I understand the point now. We don't actually necessarily have to build the cul-de-sac. When we, as long as the zoning is frozen pursuant to the filing of the plan, we can actually build the project as approved because the land itself is frozen. It's not necessarily the layout of the lots that become relevant. So we, you know, if things go as hoped, the project will be built as you approved it, and this cul-de-sac will never be constructed.
Michael, this is Richard. The research I've done on this process that we're going through right now on the preliminary subdivision plans is that these lot lines are, and the cul-de-sac has been done as efficiently and quickly as possible to provide the proper frontage. The whole goal and the only goal is to get the application in in the subdivision preliminary, the preliminary subdivision process. in the subdivision preliminary, the preliminary subdivision process locked down and started. These, the drawings with the roads, the cul-de-sacs and the frontages are, are the three simple things that need to be done to satisfy the preliminary requirement. And all four of these are all, seven of them, six of them we have tonight are all going to match it fine. And Mr. Sampson is correct. I would be absolutely shocked if any of these roads with a cul-de-sac at the, on the endeavor got built.
So they're going to revert back to a project that's already been approved? And everything that we're looking at here is, will never come to fruition.
This is just a legal procedure to
I know what it is.
Allow the applicant to control his zoning.
Yeah.
Because it's what our laws allow.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that's just my opinion, so.
Yeah, I know what it is. I'm all set.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest we go to the public.
I was just going to ask, I see that, is it Meg's hand, she never took her hand down, so I don't know if she still has.
I'll take my hand down for a change.
Okay. I didn't know if you had another question.
Well, I, I actually do, but which I will ask. It would be, it would be great to have some clarity about what the subdivision plans were that were previously approved for these three solar projects. Was there an A and R approval?
No, there was not. There wasn't a subdivision plan.
Thank you.
I
Couldn't remember if there was or not. Did you have another question, or is this on to?
I don't have another question. Thank you.
I have a question. Annie Hayes.
Go ahead.
Um, Annie Hayes, I'm wondering about the roads. If there's earth removal, do we know what those access roads are? I, I, I mean, that's speculative. So are the roads there for that? Especially in a deep lot? I don't understand how that gets out without the right access roads and all of that. So I wonder what's there.
The subdivision rules and regu-, this is Ken Buckland. The subdivision rules and regulations spell out what's required for the construction of roads in a subdivision. The planning board has it within their purview to require additional standards as so long as they don't go beyond what's being required for town road construction.
So I'm not sure. Is, are the roads there? My question is, are there roads there for earth removal, or do they come more along the line of the definitive plan?
I think, this was Richard. I would fully expect them to be in the definitive plan because when I see the definitive plan for the solar, that cul-de-sac road won't be there as designed because we have been working with Charlie Rowley's help to get access roads into these farms designed such that they minimize any visual impact. And a straight in road off of the, off of Tahona Road won't be the final solution, I can assure you.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
Motion to close the public hearing on twenty-seven Charge Pond Road, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion made by Richard, seconded by Mike King. Any discussion? All in favor, Mike King?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And aye for the chair. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, and make a motion that the board accept the preliminary subdivision plan fourteen dash twenty-one for eighty makepeace care of Beals and Thomas, Inc., twenty-seven Charge Pond Road map one ten lots, one oh one five, one oh one six and one oh two four.
Second.
Motion made by Richard, seconded by Mike King. All in favor, Mike King?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And aye for the chair. What's the next one up?
One fifty Tahona Road.
Do you want me to jump right in, Mr. Chairman, or?
Sure.
Okay. So again, Greg Sampson with Wumble Bond Dickinson here on behalf of the applicant. One fifty Tahona Road. Again, as this, this previously discussed, a relatively simple layout for a plan with a short cul-de-sac and three lots with frontage on, one lot with frontage on the roadway and two lots with frontage on both the new roadway and the existing roads. Again, this is the similar with respect to this is a project property that the board has seen and on which a solar project has been approved. And the hope would be to build that project, but this, this plan filing protects the rights to do so.
Questions from the board?
I have no questions.
Any public input? Yes, is it made?
Yes, hi, thank you again. Question about these, is this a public hearing? Or a public meeting?
Public hearing.
Within a public meeting.
I'm just, well, I understood that a public hearing would not be required for a preliminary subdivision plan. And if there was a public hearing, would there be like a butter notice required?
Uh, Ken, I read earlier that he had all the notifications returned to him. Is that accurate, Ken?
Yes, that's accurate. The, the rules and regulations call for a hearing but do not require a butter's notices to the, to the subdivision plan.
They require a public hearing for a preliminary plan?
That's, yes, that's the rules and regulations of the town.
Okay, I see. I didn't, I didn't see that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do have one, I do have one more question. On the frontage on this project, it, is there frontage on a public way?
They have demonstrated a cul-de-sac off of Tahona Road, is it?
Yes, yes.
Which I believe has been designated a public way or a way of sufficient width and grade to support subdivision.
So it doesn't
Bill Madden from GAF, it's actually noted on the plan as a fifty foot wide private way. You might recall that we laid out a fifty foot way along Tri-Tahona Road for eighty makepeace company back in two thousand nineteen. I believe if you look at the notes at the lower right-hand corner on the plan, they identify note number three nineteen, two thousand nineteen, we depicted a fifty foot wide right, right of way for eighty makepeace company properties, twenty-five feet either side of the gravel roadway. The right of way depicted in order to create closed figures for the lots and demonstrate that the lots had vital access along Tahona Road. So it was done a couple of years ago, three years ago, I guess, we're on behalf of the makepeace company at their request.
Thank you, Bill. I didn't remember the specifics on that.
This is something in the subdivision.
Can't read those notes, sorry.
That's all right.
You can consider the road that they, from which the access is provided to the subdivision road as part of the review as well.
You are, yeah, that's fine. I mean, it's a, I think that, you know, one were to go up there, it's sort of a width grade construction. It's well-established, traveled way, private way, and it's in reasonably good condition. I believe you, the planning board went out there back in two thousand eighteen and had maybe made that determination, but I can't be a hundred percent certain on that one, Ken.
I recall it was reviewed as an A and R previously.
Yeah. George and I went with you. Seeing no further comments, Chairman Barrett, I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
If I may, just raise my hand. I'm, now I'm confused. Well, Mr. Buckland said there was an A and R plan. So does that mean there was a subdivision previously? I thought I
Over the course of time, there's been several of them out there. And what Mr. Madden is referring to was one back in two thousand nineteen. Oh, and I, I think we heard reference to Chairman Barrett had talked about a lot of plot changes that were done with subdivision plans even further back, all in the, in the hope of zone freezing.
But that's different from whether there was, so someone, I believe, maybe I heard wrong, but someone just said there were no subdivision plans for the, for the three solar projects. Did I hear that wrong?
No. The, the, the three solar projects that came before this board at twenty-seven Charge Pond, one forty and one fifty Tahona did not, were, those were special permit applications for a solar farm. They were not an A and R.
So that means there wasn't a subdivision plan, but then, maybe I heard wrong, but I thought Mr. Buckland just said there was an A and R approval previously.
Not part of the solar farm effort.
So was the solar, were the solar sites cited on projects that didn't have a subdivision plan associated with them specifically?
The land has been subdivided at some point in the past that, and it could have been re-subdivided as well, too. The road, the Tahona Road was, was laid out by eighty makepeace as well to, to identify the right of way. So subdivision has occurred. It was not part of the, of the solar project, however.
Are those part of the files for the solar projects? I don't think I recall seeing them.
All approved subdivisions are put on the assessor's map. You can, you can identify the parcels by the assessors.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
I believe a lot line was moved for one fifty Tahona Road.
Thank you.
Now see no was the, did you make a motion or?
Uh, Richard made a motion to close the public hearing on one fifty Tahona Road, if I remember correctly.
Correct. I seconded it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, Mike King?
Aye.
Sam?
Breaks my heart to keep saying aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Yeah, aye.
Richard Swenson?
Aye.
Kyle?
Uh, aye.
And aye for the chair.
Carl, is that your way of, of letting us know your disposition? Don't read too much into it. Okay.
I mean, none of us are very happy about this, but there's more to town. Uh, what do we get next up?
Did you vote in acceptance of the plan?
Oh, yeah. I make We just closed up, yeah. This board accepts the preliminary subdivision plan fifteen dash twenty-one at eighty makepeace company care of GAF Engineering at one fifty Tahona Road map one eleven lot one thousand B and one thousand C.
Second.
Motion made by Richard, seconded by Mike King. All in favor, Mike King?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Yep.
Sam Corbett?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And aye for the chair. Next up.
Good evening. This is Greg Sampson. I'm here for one forty Tahona Road. Eighty makepeace engineering, uh, and GAF. Did the engineering on this one. Sounds like a broken record, but it's, again, we have a small cul-de-sac creating three new lots. Again, this is a site on which a previously, a solar project was previously approved by this board. And this filing allows that project to be built and its configuration as approved for the period of time that is necessary. Again, the, the, these are map one twelve lots, one thousand F and one thousand H, so it upsets the other property we just looked at. So I, well, if there's any questions on this one, I'm happy to answer that as well.
Board members?
No questions.
I have no questions, Chairman.
Public comment?
Think you wore them down, George.
Certainly wore us down.
Apologies.
Motion?
Motion to close the public hearing on one sixty-one dash twenty-one preliminary subdivision plan eighty makepeace company care GAF Engineering, Inc. at one forty Tahona Road map one twelve lots one thousand F and one thousand H.
This, would you have a hand up? Nancy, is that you?
It, it is George. Thank you very much, Nancy McHale. I have a question about the process. Now, these were site plan special permits reviews that were done and would quote be good for a year. Now that they've put in this subdivision plan, which, if they put, as I understand it, they have to put in a definitive plan within seven months. Can they use that same definitive, the same site plan review that they, the permit that they already got? Or do they need to put something else in? Or does this automatically, because it's the same map and lot numbers, guarantee it for eight years?
It's guaranteed for the property if they file a definitive plan, that the existing zoning would remain as is. That existing zoning allows for a special permit for a floor field.
Okay, but I get that, but do they have to come back again within the seven months to do that again, or is it
definitive?
We have to return within seven months with, with a definitive plan in order for the special permit to be honored. If it were to extend past the twelve month period.
Their, their special permit, if not substantially complete, will expire in two years.
Okay, so it, it has to be started within a year and substantially completed in two?
Uh, I don't think it's, there's a stat date on it. I think it just has to be substantially complete.
If I, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I can just, so there, there's two different deadlines with the special permit. The, the one-year deadline we mentioned earlier is just a period of time that we would benefit from a zoning freeze by a special permit. The permit itself is good for two years, and, and all we have to do within that two years is, you know, commence use or construction. And then the permit actually extends for the, as long as construction continues. So, you know, as long as the permit itself will likely be good for long enough for the project you know, as long as the permit itself will likely be good for long enough for the project to proceed. But the 12-month window where the zoning is frozen by the permit was the problem area for the applicant.
Okay, thank you very much for that explanation. It's it's just a little disconcerting to see it being 200 and something acres in this subdivision plan and that the the site plan or the special permit was issued for, I don't know, 60 or 70. So it's just, it's a lot of a different acreage. So, but that's a that's a different conversation. I appreciate your explanation as to the timeframes. Thank you.
And yes, Meg, you have your hand up again? You're muted, Meg.
Yeah, thank you. A question about the terminology. So I know the the zoning freezes relate to permits that might be in place. So has this project gotten a special permit or has it gotten a site plan review or both?
Both.
So the site plan review acts as a special permit?
Yes, and our site plan review is a special permit.
There's also a special permit for the solar field as well.
Is that a function of the bylaw that's designates a site plan review as a special permit?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. I just didn't notice that on the site plan review, it was called a special permit.
Mr. Chairman, there was a motion and a second on closing the public hearing for 140 Tohona Road. All right. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, Mike King?
Aye.
Sam?
This is the toughest one. Aye.
Yes, it is. Mike Baptiste?
Yeah, aye.
Richard Swenson?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And aye for the chair.
Now much to accept.
Motion to accept the preliminary subdivision plan 16-21 AD Makepeace Care GAF Engineering at 140 Tohona Road, map 112 lots 1000F and 1000H.
Second.
Seconded by Mike King. Any discussion? All in favor, Mike King?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And aye for the chair.
Thank you. I appreciate the board's time tonight.
Thank you. What's what's next on the agenda? LSC Hydra LLC Care GAF Engineering subdivision plan at 48 North Carver Road. Okay, we got a plan? So what have we got here? What we have here is a preliminary plan indicating a 250-foot long cul-de-sac to create the the frontage for three lots to institute a zoning freeze for the land that's shown on the plan. It's owned by Linda Rinta. It used to be Lynn and Paul Rinta. The cranberry farmers on North on North Carver Road. So we're seeking to to freeze the zoning that's in effect, that was in effect at the time of the filing. So we presented to the planning board this this preliminary subdivision plan to begin to institute the freeze of the land shown in the plan. Bill, 1046A and 1046B get their frontage from the cul-de-sac road? 1046B and 1046A, yes. That's correct. And C gets it off North Carver Road? But they also have, it looks like they have.
They have it on the cul-de-sac also.
We show it off the cul-de-sac. Yeah. Okay, I have no questions, Mr. Chairman. Is this the piece of land where we normally see the bees?
No.
No, the bees are on, I guess it would be Tremont Street on the north side of 58, just across from. North Carver Road.
You see the old blueberry patch, George.
Yeah, I see the Louisiana River now. I can get a better feel for where it is. All right. Is there any public input on this plan? Seeing none?
Entertainer motion to approve.
Close the public hearing?
Yeah, close that for us, sure. Close the public hearing for.
As soon as we make that motion, oh, the hand's gone.
Well, I'll put it up again. I just want to object for the record. Our coalition objects to this preliminary plan for the same reasons that we discussed previously, and that's just for the record. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, a motion was made and seconded? Accurate? Who seconded?
I don't believe I heard a second. Second?
Richard, Richard will second it.
Richard will second anything. Okay, thanks, Richard.
Did you trade places? Mike made the motion and Richard seconded?
That sounds good.
Yep.
There's a hand up again. Is it, was there something you want to add?
Sorry, no.
Okay.
I've been getting creeps and watching all this entertaining stuff we have on today.
All in favor, Mike King?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
I think that was a aye.
Aye, aye, yes, aye.
And aye for the chair. Thank you. Motion?
Thanks very much.
We have an additional motion? I'll read it off. Motion to accept preliminary subdivision plan 17-21 LSC Hydra LLC Care GAF Engineering, Inc. at 3644 and 48 North Carver Road, map 104 lots 1046 V slash B and V slash C.
Second.
Discussion? Yeah, I have a comment I'd like to make, George. Ms. Rinta spoke at town meeting regarding the the solar bylaw changes and made some very valid points on behalf of small small solar farm developers or small cranberry farmers that wanted to try to do the dual-use solar farms. We're going to have an opportunity as as some members of the planning board to be probably be part of the town administrator advisory panel or board of selectmen advisory panel or something on doing a much more comprehensive solar bylaw review over the next several months. And I would just like to go on the record to say that we should make sure that we reach out to Ms. Rinta and get her input and have, give her an opportunity to explain and us answer questions to understand her concerns. Thank you. Yes, I hope she participates in that. That's all I have. Motion's been made. Okay. You made the motion. Who, Mike seconded?
Yeah. Are we motion on closing the public hearing or we motion to approve?
Go on.
To approve.
To approve.
I had to get some discussion in there to break things up a little bit.
All right, all in favor, Mike King?
Aye.
Sam? Sam, you're muted. Mike? Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And aye for the chair. Ready more?
One more.
One more.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Thanks. Oh, this one. Refresh my memory. I've seen these plans before. Was that just from me looking at them on our website? Or have this been presented here before?
Mr. Swenson, Joe Shanahan on behalf of the applicant. In addition to this filing of a preliminary subdivision plan, we have filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, and they've opened a public hearing on these plans. And we've also filed the site plan review and a special permit with the planning board, and that's scheduled for a public hearing on June 28. So you may have seen these same plans in either of those other locations.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Questions of the board?
No questions, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to present, but if the board is comfortable with what they've seen, I know you've had a long night already. It's up to you.
Have you, any? Any board members need a explanation?
No, this meets all the requirements.
It's the same as all of them.
Yep.
Exact same thing.
Any hands up there, George?
Yeah, I was going to get to that. We got a bunch of them. All of a sudden, Ms. Malone, I think you were first.
Hi, Colleen Malone. I'm at 114 Fearing Hill. Is this going to go all the way to the railroad tracks?
The old way road right away, yes.
Yeah, so it's going to be in how far back? Is it like the, are we going to see this or is it going to be leave some of the trees in the front on the road? I guess I'm I'm just a little confused as to what's going on because initially the people looking at that land were going to put houses. And and then I guess they didn't win the bid or whatever, however things go. And now all of a sudden, it's going to be a large solar field. And that's something, I mean, that, you know, we all know the issues with the solar fields right now on top of bringing property values down, but that's not something I want to look out my window and look at every day.
There will be a buffer around it, but I don't quite know where you're located as to what.
I'm right by the railroad tracks. I'm two houses up from the railroad tracks.
On the opposite side of the track?
On the opposite side, correct. So for 44 years, you know, you don't have to look at a fence and solar panels. I guess I just am, I'm a little concerned about that. I would have preferred houses to this.
Ms. Malone, not to not to repeat ourselves, but the details that you're looking to get would be in the definitive plan, which will come within seven months of the of the acceptance of this initial subdivision plan, which has nothing to do with the design or concept of the solar farm. I will tell you that current bylaws have a 50-foot buffer requirement. I will also tell you that the applications that I have read have asked for some waivers to that buffer on some of the borders on this property, which will be looked at with a lot of seriousness. But the questions that you need answered will or won't be able to be answered until later, unfortunately.
I appreciate that. I do. I appreciate what you're saying and I understand what you're saying. But even in the Wareham Week this week, they put and they put what they plan on doing. So they know what they're planning on doing. I get that you're approving the preliminary plan. So I guess I just want to voice my concern that nobody wants to look out their front window and look at solar panels.
Mr. Chairman, this is Joe Shanahan again, if I may. First thing I want to indicate is, Ms. Malone, you won't have to wait anywhere near seven months to hear the specifics. I'll get answers to your questions. We're scheduled to be in front of this board two weeks from tonight with a application for site plan review and for special use permit, at which time you're certainly welcome to ask that question again if I don't answer it sufficiently during my presentation. But you will get all of those answers two weeks from tonight. I'd also indicate that the request for waivers that the planning board member just referred to are not on the westerly side of the property where your home is located. Those waivers are requested for the easterly side and would not impact the visual impact of any properties over in that area. We are required to maintain a natural screening buffer between our project and your property. In addition, we will supplement that natural screening buffer so that there will be no visual impact from your home. So again, this isn't the proper venue, but I want to be transparent with you. We will present a full plan, including a landscape plan, which will include landscape screening before the same body two weeks from tonight.
All right. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it and look forward to two weeks from tonight.
Yeah, yeah. What you're seeing is basically the lot lines, the outline of the property and and as as stated, you'll learn more with the, as we go through the process. Meg, I think you're up next.
I'm sure. Again, Community Land and Water Coalition objects to the preliminary subdivision plan as not meeting the regulations for the record. Thank you.
Ms. Sheen, may I ask specifically, in what regard you believe my plan does not meet the regulations?
As I stated earlier, our legal interpretation of the by of the subdivision regulation is that it needs to provide enough information so that the public can have an understanding of potential issues such as drainage and the citing of the intended use on it. So if this subdivision plan is intended to describe an industrial solar installation with battery storage, then it's our view that the bylaw requires, the subdivision regulations require the preliminary plans to show that so that the public can have their concerns addressed before a definitive plan is submitted.
Yeah, with all due respect, this plan is not intended to represent or present any of the matters which you just indicated. That would be the matter of site plan review and a special use permit. This plan is simply intended to show two lots being created with a shot cul-de-sac creating frontage for both and nothing more.
Thank you for the explanation. We will agree to disagree.
Nancy, you're up next.
Hi, this is Kathy of Kathy and Nancy, Kathy Papalardo.
Names are on the.
That's okay. I'm speaking with a dual hat on. I also live on Fearing Hill Road at 87. And I'm also the property steward for the Fearing Hill Conservation Area. And I'm also the property steward for the Fearing Hill Conservation Area. And Mr. Shanahan made the remark about. Or one of the board members possibly made it about, uh, possibly decreasing the setbacks on the eastern side of that property. And the eastern side of that property, that entire, almost the entire. Border on the eastern side is what abuts the Fearing Hill Conservation Area. And in the interest of protecting the conservation values of that land. We do not want to see that buffer decreased. The land where this project is intended is elevated. It's the highest point on Fearing Hill. All of that is gonna drain down into what is already wetlands, which we'll discuss, I understand, in two weeks. But I'm also talking about potentially destroying the scenic value. From conservation land when you're gonna be walking in there and you look up to the left and you decrease the buffer. So I would urge the board to keep that in mind. It's true, there aren't people living over to the right. But that conservation area, people in this town raised a lot of money to protect that land. And it's our job to protect its conservation values. We don't want to start cutting back on buffers because nobody lives there. Thank you.
But wasn't this site also proposed for a conservation acquisition?
Years ago, yes, we tried, we and several other organizations tried to acquire this site. To add it to the other conservation lands because it was 2015. Because it would make a contiguous block of land. Which is beneficial to the environment, the habitat, the whole picture. Instead of having little, you know, 50 acres or, excuse me, 40 acres here or 20 acres there. When you make a contiguous block. You get a much larger impact in regards to the environmental factors.
Actually, that group made a higher bid offer for this property than it was actually sold for substantially. One good thing, it doesn't have any cavernous sand. It's all glacial till over there, so. They won't be selling that off.
All right, anything further?
Entertaining most in the close of public hearing?
I would. Guess nobody else would though.
Think they're all sleeping.
Sure, a second?
I heard a second.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. Um, discussion? All in favor? Mike King?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Richard?
Ross, Richard.
You not off? Carl?
He's walking his dog.
Carl, did you cast a vote?
Aye.
Very good. And aye for the chair. Just to build the record, show that, uh, Mike wasn't, uh, Richard wasn't present when we, uh. Asked for his vote.
He's muted. He's on.
He's muted. He's there.
I'm sorry. I, I vote aye, George. I apologize.
No, it's all right. Uh. Do we have another motion in store?
And go ahead, Mike.
Motion to accept preliminary subdivision plan 18 dash 21 Wareham MA3 LLC Care of Atlantic Design Engineer. Inc. 91 and 101 Fearing Hill Road, map 91 lot 1,000 and map 74 lot 1007.
Second.
Uh, made by Richard, seconded by Mike King. Any discussion? Mike King?
Aye.
Sorry, getting punchy. Uh, Sam? You're muted, Sam.
Aye.
Uh, Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And aye for the chair.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And have you received any response on my cost estimate for that site plan review?
Uh, I don't know. I'll have to check with Sonia.
Okay.
Is, is that it on the agenda? I don't have it in front of me.
Well, we have a comment on the master plan, um, is for anyone that wants to. I will, I do want to report to the board at town meeting. The endorsement of town meeting was, um, successful. It would be my intent to. At some very future time, um, for this board to. Start to execute. Um, some aspects of the master plan that are sitting idle right now. And I, I not, don't want to. Don't want to promote anything to speak of right now. I would just ask you all to. Look at, um, the master plan. I will resend out a, a short summary of all the. Goals, categories, goals and strategies that you could look at. And I think it might be, uh, an interesting conversation, especially in person. To, uh, come up with one or two that we think as a board, we may be able to champion. So. I will resend out that summary list and please take a look at it and let's. See what we can do from a proactive planning perspective as opposed to a reactive permitting perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, in regards to the minutes, I had seen the three minutes that were sent out, three sets of minutes. That were sent out, but I didn't see the long list. That was sent out today till the last minute. I don't know how many of you are prepared to act on any of these.
I am not. Well, I had, I did have some comments, uh, but we can, we can hold those off.
And Ken, um. Would you just? Remind Sonia that. Executive session minutes have to be approved in executive session. And shouldn't be, uh, shouldn't become part of, of the regular, uh. The records of an open meeting.
Will do.
And Ken, if you want to, uh, let Sonia know, I believe, uh, the January 27th minutes that she published. Actually say the meeting date was the 13th. So I think there's an error in those minutes.
I'll check on the date and see.
I, yeah, that, that's why I said, and then I don't think we got the May 11th. 2020 minutes, which we were supposed to vote on.
All right, I'll check on those as well.
Thank you.
I just looked at the, uh. The meeting, January 13th, 2020, the preliminary business was to. Approve the meeting minutes of January 13th, 2019, so.
Yeah, the, 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 uh, name of the file was the 27th. I think there's a typo.
Yeah, it would, I would guess, yeah. That looks like he's trying to catch up with a bunch of them, so we'll have to get on that.
I'm not seeing any public comment right now. And unless there's any other business, I think we're ready to adjourn. I have, I would like to have other business, please.
Who's that?
Carl. So, um, the, uh. The, the, uh, I believe Ms. Ms. McHale raised an objection on each of the, um. Preliminary site plans. And I understand her confusion because I have read that same section of the bylaws. And had similar, um. Concerns that I think the bylaw sets a higher standard for preliminary site plan review. Then, uh, we can achieve. And I think that perhaps the bylaw may be at odds. With. Our situation. And I'm not sure what, how to remedy that. So, I mean, one remedy would be to clarify the bylaw, which is to change the bylaw and go through town meeting. I don't know. And, and, and each of the board members, uh, made a very good attempt to try and explain. Um, how we, how we can act. On preliminary site plans, but I, I do see the confusion that the wording of that bylaw causes.
They're actually the rules and regulations of this, of the planning board. And you can, uh, you, uh. Modify, amend and, and adopt new regulations on your own with a public hearing. As long, as long as you follow the, the, uh, rules and regulations with the town clerk.
So, so it's not, it's not a bylaw. It's, it's our rules and regulations?
That's correct.
Oh, good. Oh, then we have some more latitude. Then I suggest that we, we think about how to clarify that. So that it's less confusing for members of the town. I don't know what.
Go ahead. Out of the thing of, part of the reason for preliminary plan. The more information they put into it, the more answers they'll get. Moving toward the, uh, definitive, which none of it is really binding. Uh, it would just simplify. If you had a big complicated plan, the more they could give us, the more. We could filter through before they go to definitive. In this case, they never intend to, uh, build them.
Carl, could I ask a favor, um, and to Ken and, and Mr. And Mr. Chairman, that. We put this on in a future meeting agenda, uh, hopefully, uh, on a shorter, on a, on an agenda that's not real, real busy. And Carl, if you could prepare the, uh, ahead of time. The talking points that you think are worthy of discussion and debate. I think that would be a really good thing to do. Right, I, I can work on that. And, and I think. We're all doing our best, but, um, if, if members of the town are confused by our process. If we can improve the process, then we, we can improve our results. I couldn't agree more.
Very good.
All right, so I'll, I'll work on that. And George, just if we can get it on an agenda sometime, we can talk about it.
Yeah. Um. My next meeting will all be in the same room.
Yay.
Hopefully.
You guys are gonna live to regret it.
Right? Hopefully it'll be a padded room. Uh, a question. Um, some communities are doing hybrid. Meetings where they also have online ac- access to the meeting. Uh, do you want to try to attempt that?
I, I, in support of that, Ken, for the two meetings in July, I am going to be away. I would love to be able to participate remotely. I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment. Um, I am a thousand percent behind that. However. Um, this is gonna take some technology coordination. With WCTV, uh, with the, with the, uh, the room that we meet in. Um, I don't want, I, I think we just can't rush into this. This needs to be, um. Thought out and vetted if we're gonna do it to make sure we don't run into some of the situations that other meetings have had.
Uh, the selectmen doing hybrid tomorrow night? Not that I'm aware of.
And, and what, what other comment, Ken? Um, I've asked the question about hybrid meetings and. Of some people that I think are in the know. And they said that they're not sure if, um. If the mass law will allow it. The, the, the laws that were put in place for the COVID shutdown where. One or the other, not both is, is kind of what I'm hearing. I, I, and I'm not a sore, I, that's just what one person told me. That's pretty smart.
Yeah, there is a, there is a question as to the legality of it. It is, a board members can't do it unless they have an excuse. And, and can participate by remotely, but there is this, uh, standard for that remote participation. The question is whether or not the public can also be participating, uh, in a remote fashion.
I sure would like that to happen if we could do it right.
Can I have the mute button? Uh, we do have a couple of hands, hands raised if, uh. You want to indulge. Um, Kathy, that's. I think you were first.
Um, this is Nancy. Thank you.
You changed names again.
I know, I know. We're making you crazy. Sorry. Um, I do appreciate the, the opportunity. I would say, I would lobby hard for keeping it remote for, at the very least, for the, um, the. The, um, attendees that are not board members. And I, I asked for that because it is so much easier. To see the plans, to see what you're talking about and to actually hear what's going on. Um, in the rooms, it's, it's very, very difficult to hear because. The proponent has their back to the audience. And the board will hear, but it's, it's almost impossible to make sense of it. If you indeed have a hearing problem. And it is gonna. Limit participation from the public who may be, who is gonna. Be affected by your decisions. So that's, that's my two cents. The other question I had is more of a logistics question. For the meeting on the 28th. Um, it was already advertised as a Zoom meeting. Um, but if it, that is indeed gonna be in person, is that gonna be, are we gonna get new green cards for that? Or?
Cards. We posted a change of venue of the, of the meeting location.
Where was that posted?
At the town clerk's office.
Okay, because I didn't see it anywhere on the town's website.
I'll check on that and see what the, uh, situation is then, because that was posted.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And, uh, Tricia, did you have a question?
Hi folks, I am not asleep. Um. The, with regard to the Zoom meetings, I also, um, encourage. If it's legally possible to have them continue. There have been, um. You know, one of the things I'm working with is trying to get more. Interest at, from the common citizen. And when you talk with them. The concept of perhaps if they participate, a Zoom meeting is substantially better. Now, they've been zoomed out. During COVID because they've been working, they've been teaching their kids, they've been doing whatever they almost can do to live. Via Zoom, but now that life is going back to a little bit more normal way of living. Um, I'm hearing that Zoom is something that they want an option still left open for if they are especially going to attend. Um, public meetings in areas that they have significant interest. So. Um, and then I also mirror what Nancy says about, it's just substantially easier to follow what's going on. Um, in the meetings. So for what it's worth, there it is, guys.
Thanks, Tricia.
Thanks.
Yeah, I have an awful hard time looking at the plans online. Especially when I can't scroll them. Anything further?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Was that, uh, Mike that seconded? Okay.
Mike Baptiste.
Hearing none. Mike King?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Carl?
Uh, yeah, let's, let's close to me. Aye.
Sad meeting for Wareham.
And aye for the chair. Good night, everyone.
Thanks, thanks, everybody.